Good morning. Welcome to the San Mateo County Planning Commission meeting of September 22, 2021. Please join us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Chair Ketchum.
Here.
That is represented by Manoit and Montes. I don't see some Fox yet on the line. Oh, there he is. Never mind, and Fox, move them over. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any subject that is not on today's agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. First staff will explain how the public comment process works for our remote meeting.
Thank you, Chair. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. In the general public comment period and for those items on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt and connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of a meeting, at the beginning of the meeting for an item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your account and you may begin speaking. So right now for public comment items not on the agenda, I do not see any hands raised, Chair.
Okay. Seeing no requests to speak, if there are no objections, we will close oral communications and move on to the consent agenda. We have revised minutes for August 25 and September 8, 2021. May we have a motion to approve?
I've moved that we approve the revised minutes for both the meetings.
I second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Senator Buckta.
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi.
Chair Ketchum.
Hi.
Thank you, motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on now to the regular agenda, staff will introduce item number one.
Item number one, owner, properties and investment partnership LLC applicant Raj Sharma, file number PLN 2020-00043, location located off of Ocean Boulevard between Priscilla Avenue and Bernal Avenue, and our project planner is Canoa Kelly.
Just unmute, okay. Share my screen here. Set up. Okay, so the project in front of you is the consideration of a coastal development permit, design review, non-conforming use permit, and a variance to allow the construction of a new 1,861 square foot, single-family residence with an attached 423 square foot, two-car garage. The reduced front setback will be 14 feet, eight inches, where 20 feet is required. And that is for the non-conforming use permit. And a variance is also requested to allow an increase in the site coverage from 25% to 32%. And the parcel is a substandard parcel at 4,761 square feet. Let's go to the location here in Moss Beach on the coast, just west of the airport. This is the 4,761 square foot parcel. There you can see it off Ocean Boulevard between Bernal and Priscilla Avenue. And here is a look at what the site looks like now. You can see it's just kind of covered with ice plant, but it's a vacant lot there. Here's an aerial view from the bluffs. So this is the proposed house design. Again, it is 1,161 square feet and with a 423 square foot garage there in the front. And then here is the rear elevation with some of the landscaping elements. They wanted to actually put a cypress tree here in the corner. And here's the actual landscape plan for the project. So moving on to the non-conforming use permit, it is a substandard parcel. Typically, parcels in this area, the minimum lot size would be 20,000 square feet, so it's quite a bit under that. So they're developing a non-conforming parcel. And with that, they're requesting a reduction of the front setback to 14 feet, eight inches to accommodate the garage. And you can see where the setback kind of clips the front of the garage here. So all of that, the home is within the setback. It's just a small portion of the garage at the front of the residence that will be in the in the front setback there. And then also, they are requesting a variance to allow an increase in the site coverage. So they comply with FAR so that to maximize the space and come up with a design that meets our design guidelines. I have an illustration up here from our, just pulled from our design guidelines that illustrates how we like to see the second stories, a setback from the main structure. And the massing is not right on top of the first floor. The only alternative was to design a project that kind of looks like a box if we wanted to try and redesign the project. So to comply with design review standards, they are requesting, and to add that off-street parking compliance, they're requesting a variance for the site coverage here. And so we reached out to our GIS department to kind of get some data on the parcels in the area. And the parcel is significantly substandard per our GIS and for analysis, only 18% of the parcels in this area, Seal Cove are equal to or less than the subject parcel. Most of them are undeveloped. So the project is also in a geological hazard zone. So you can see here, the different colors represent Zone 1, which is right on the bluffs. There is no development that is allowed there. Zone 2 is an area of questionable stability where a geotechnical report would have to be provided. And then Zone 3 is the most stable part of Seal Cove. So as you can see here, the subject site is located, a majority of the site is located in Zone 3 with a small portion there in Zone 2 in that question area of questionable stability. We did receive some, some letters from Green, comment letters from Green Foothills. I also received an email from the Coastal Commission. The letter from Green Foothills requested information or stated information about the geotechnical report that was not provided. I did provide the bluff retreat studies, but the actual geotechnical report was reviewed by the geotechnical department. And in that, the geotechnical consultant concluded that the risk of, you know, legal facture, densification, lurching, slope instability, landslides, fault activity are low on the subject site. So that, that geotechnical report has been approved by the geotechnical department. I wanted to move on to another point of contention was the bluff retreat. So this was the bluff retreat analysis that was submitted by the applicant's consultant. And you can see the 50 and 75-year projected bluff retreat. The, the analysis, though unfortunately, did not include sea level rise in, in the report. But our county geotechnical department has estimated the level of retreat based on their analysis of the sea level rise and has projected that the worst-case scenario, the bluff retreat will be at that 75-year mark within 50 years. So that is within five feet of the road. And so the road will still be intact and the parcel will still be intact within that 50 years. It is viable and, and would comply with our LCP regulations. But we, we also recommend that additional conditions be added, that the applicant update their geological investigation, formally update their, their investigation and add the bluff retreat analysis that would be approved by the geotechnical department prior to issuance of a building permit. There are also conditions, just general conditions, that the coastal commission has recommended, dealing with the coastal hazard areas. No future shoreline armoring, that's not allowed, future removal because, and assume assuming a risk because it is in a geological hazard area. And these are just estimates of the bluff retreat. There are some additional conditions that the coastal commission has, has recommended, and we recommend those be added as well. So the project is, aside from the site coverage and that front setback, the, the project is in compliance with all of our zoning regulations, design review, our design review committee has recommended approval of the project as presented to you. And the project complies with the general plan LCP. The staff report also includes the variance and non-conforming findings. So staff believes that all findings can be met for the variance and the non-conforming use permit. And the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, Class 3, for construction of small structures, including new single-family residences. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit, designer view, the non-conforming use permit, and the variance for the project by adopting the required findings and conditions listed in Attachment A. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll open it to any questions.
Oh, thank you. Do commissioners have questions for staff? We'll start with Commissioner Ramirez.
No, no questions at the moment.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
I have one question, question for the planner. If the sound, as you described it earlier in your presentation, the sound tree is most stable, which is the area where the construction is going to be. Why is it that, why is it that we needed to have the applicant to, to sign all different kind of disclaimer, which lead more to a questionable area of stability rather than most stable area of stability?
It's just a general condition because they are in a geological hazard area. They have to, you know, put that on their, they have to put that on as a condition of approval that if anything happens, because these are all, these are all estimates, you know, based on, on research that we, that we have done and that the consultants have done, there could be increased erosion due to factors that are unforeseeable. So again, these are just estimates. If for some reason that the property is affected, they have to know that the risks involved in building on, on that, that section of the coast.
So, so far, as you stated, the county consider this development to be a safety develop, is a safety develop area.
Yes, all of the, of the required geological reports, they conclude that it's safe to build for that, those 50 years that we require the project to be viable for.
And because of those 50 years, then the county is trying to do all the disclaimer that he, the applicant needs to sign that beer toward the fact that maybe the area is not that stable.
It's, so there's no question that the, that the cliff erosion is occurring. But, but yes, if the, if for some reason there, you know, erosion occurs faster and it reaches the, the subject's home, anything along that, that area, the, for safety reasons, we need to have the, we have the authority to condemn the property as, you know, unsafe. So we don't want anybody living there if it's about to, you know, fall into the ocean. But, but that's just a general disclaimer that the coastal commission puts on all properties in the GH zones.
Okay. Permission of the Chair, I'd like to add just one thing, and that is that the commission, as well as the county, is concerned about future armoring of the, of the bluff. And that is, in the event that these coastal properties become threatened, that the owners of the properties would want to construct a seawall to stop erosion. And seawalls generally can have adverse impacts on coastal resources and under the coastal act should be avoided where feasible. So in addition to alerting future owners to potential geologic hazards, the conditions that staff is recommending and that the coastal commission encouraged us to require make it clear that the future construction of a seawall to protect the property will not be allowed.
In addition, with all the disclaimer that he is asking.
That's correct.
To sign. Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Hanson, give me questions?
Yes, the three lots that surround this property, what is the square footage of the built structures there?
These two lots for 999 and 961?
Yes, it looks like there's construction behind it.
And this one, I, let me check for you.
That might take a little time for Canoa to pull up, so maybe while.
So, yeah, so, yeah, so 999 is a 6,000 square foot parcel. And the one right next door, 961, is 5,850 square feet.
And what's the size of the structures? I mean, that's what I'm really interested in.
The, the size of the structures, it looks like for 999 is 1,170 square feet. I, 961, let me see, probably, or, that was for 96, 961 is 1,170 square feet. The house next door for 999 is 1,820 square feet. So those are the two developed parcels.
And then there was the one under construction, Canoa? Do you happen to know that, the one behind?
That one, that one, no, I have, I have the parcel, let me see. Yeah, that one, that one, we don't have any details on. I could, I would have to go and look through the, the actual submittal.
Okay.
And see.
So basically, this.
It looks like, it looks like it was 2,300 square feet was the.
So it's about the same size.
Yeah, that property in the, in the rear.
Okay, my concern at the, with just the first two is about twice as big as was already existing. But we now have one that's next to it approximately the same size. Okay, those are my questions.
Okay.
Oh, I guess it's my turn. Let's see, on the variance, the, the house under construction at 25 Bernal is on a 5,000 square foot lot. So that's 240 square feet bigger than the lot before us today. And they have only a right foot setback of eight feet, no variance for that house. And the house that, there's a house in review in this block on the corner of Bernal and Priscilla, which that lot is 4,484 square feet. In other words, it's 300 square feet smaller than the lot, than the project before us today. And that, they propose to get by with an off-street parking exception for one car garage and no variance. So that's, that's in this block. So it, it does, the findings for the variance, well, whatever, I just wanted to point that out, that information. On, on the bluff retreat, so you say that the study, if you included sea level rise would bring it to within five feet of the road in
Yes.
50 years, or what was that?
Yes, in 50 years, it would, it would be at this 75-year point projected on this, on this cross-section.
And that's within five feet of the road. Okay, so the, well, it's, it's awkward that this new information, the email from the coastal commission staff and these new conditions haven't really had a chance to look at that. And the, the study that, that was attached to the staff report, plate seven, has the bluff retreat analysis, the arrow that they drew from the fixed corner at Bernal and whatever the street behind is, over to the coastline, it, it's at an angle that takes it toward a, one little, if you could show that, it's plate seven.
Seven, let me see if I have it here.
Of the geo report. So it goes from a fixed point at the corner of Alvarado and Bernal, and it runs at an angle toward an inset on the 1946 coastlines, one little scooped-out area where it's more eroded, which results in a reduced distance from the starting point and hence a reduced rate of retreat for the comparison period. And that seemed arbitrary. And the, the bluff retreat analysis uses only the longer, long-term average we have, as we learned with the 199 Arbor Lane project that came before us in late 2019, and went to the coastal commission, and they came up with a much more conservative number for cliff erosion and increased wave action and that. So one could expect that approach if, if or when this is approved, appealed. But I, the coastal retreat, in this case, you've got a road there, Ocean Boulevard. So it's a county road. And my, my concern, what is the, the county already provided, so part of Ocean Boulevard has already been closed, about two blocks away and north of there, it's all closed. And the county already provided new Seal Cove road connections from east after that happened. And in this block here, the, the house on the corner of Bernal and the proposed house in the corner of Priscilla will have access driveways from the side streets. They won't depend on Ocean Boulevard. So it's only the two parcels mid-block which depend on Ocean for access with no opportunity to acquire access to the rear. The, the elevation of the road, but, so when the cliff gets to within five feet of the road or wherever it is, the elevation of that cliff, which is practically vertical, will be 110 feet. So how, how close to the road does the cliff need to be before the, somebody says this is unsafe for vehicles, before the parcel loses access other than by foot? And, and what is the county's responsibility to provide that access?
I'll, I'll answer that, yeah. You know, I, I don't think that there's a clear answer to those questions. I would say that the proximity of the bluff to the road really depends on, you know, the underlying soil conditions beneath the road. And so you see places in Big Sur where, you know, the, the road's right up on the bluff. And so it's hard to say, really hard to predict here. I think with, when it reaches within five feet, it's certainly a concern. What is the county's responsibility? Well, we can't beat Mother Nature and nobody expects us to. So I think that there would have to be an analysis of, is the county wanting to undertake some effort to protect the road? And I don't know what that analysis would conclude, honestly.
Well, I, this came up because with the Marada Road Bridge replacement, in that staff report, the CDP came from the coastal commission and they said, well, the Marada Road is an existing road and the county is going to have to armor it to protect the buildings on the other side. And I thought, well, is the county, if, if a road is pre-coastal act, does that mean the county has a responsibility to protect that road? And I mean, I could, perhaps, maybe the, the case could be made for the commercial area and coastal trail there in Miramar on Marada Road, but the bluff there is much lower. This is, we're talking over 100 feet and, and it's only to benefit two parcels. So the economics, I mean, I'm just thinking, how would it work if the county is responsible, then would the county need to buy the houses to make?
Would be an option. I, I think the first question would be, is the county responsible? And I think there would be a sound argument to make that, you know, we can't control Mother Nature. And if we don't have the resources or the cost-benefit analysis doesn't justify the action, then it could fall upon, you know, the owners of the property to pursue whatever actions they want to take. In this case, the property owner would be unable to seek permission to install a protective device solely to protect their property. And I'm quite familiar with these issues as they relate to other areas of the coast in my professional experience, particularly in Santa Cruz. And there are instances where homes have been deed restricted as recommended in this case, where eventually the erosion gets too close to their home and they're not permitted to protect it. And they need to deconstruct the home before it falls into the ocean. So that is a potential scenario here is that if the Ocean Boulevard would become unsafe and the county were to determine that, you know, we are not in a position to take action. And it got to the point where safe access was no longer available to the project, as Canoa pointed out, the property. As Canoa pointed out, the property could be condemned and required to be deconstructed.
But the county wouldn't have to purchase the house.
Um, I think that would be, um, something the owner might try and, uh, assert. I think, given the history here and the record, um, I, I feel that the county would be in a good position to say. All the appropriate warnings were given, and so the county does not have responsibility.
Well, I think that would be key becau- part, just part of this situation because, um. The, the house that's already there mid-block next door is. Is pretty old, it's what, fifty, seventy years or something, and I imagine it wouldn't be that expensive. But if we give a permit to this large new home and then the county's on the foot to, to remedy the situation. If they can't access, that would not be good, uh, I just, uh, the other thing I'm concerned about is that, um. As the cliff approaches the road, which is inevitably will, uh. And it's iffy about whether you want to drive a big truck there, how are they going to remove the house? I mean, they might have to be, because they don't have any way to remove it other than to pull it out to the road and then all it away, you know what I mean? So, I mean, just all, there's so many questions here that are unanswered, that are, are key, that we're asking to, um. Approve a permit for the, um. Oh, the other thing is, in the, the condition of approval fifteen, uh, it defers the, the geotech report to the building stage. And saying that if any hazards found mitigation should be provided in the foundation design, uh, and grading proposal. Well, this information is needed for the CDP as we saw at one ninety-nine Arbor Lane. At the CC, at the Coastal Commission on Appeal, they prohibited deep pier and tile-back foundation for coastal hazard stability. Because it is a form of coastal armoring, so if the geotech report says this house is going to need that sort of support. The, the coastal commission is not going to allow it, uh, if the other. Anyway, um, that's also, we don't have the information, uh, the. Thank you for showing the landscape plan and the Monterey Cypress at the rear corner, um. I just. Um, you know, we saw the picture of the parcel and the house under construction at the rear, which, uh. Sure, it's under the height limit, but it reads as six, three stories and a plenty of windows and. The rear of this new proposed house facing the house to the rear has, uh. Full, full-size windows and balcony and everything, and I, I just did, I don't know if Design Review was aware of the. Of the, um. Anyway, I just, uh, it just seemed odd that, that, um, that juxtaposition. I mean, perhaps you don't know whether Design Review was aware of this proposed house at the rear that was coming along.
Um, and they mostly, they would have had to have, uh, approved it. Um, so I'm sure it, uh, it went through Design Review, all the, the same folks are on the Design Review Committee. Um, I, I'm not sure if it came up during the, I don't think it came up during the design review discussion.
Well, this current CDRC, um, this, the house to the rear was actually approved in twenty eleven. And, uh, there wasn't water or something, it's been delayed, so the current people on Design Review, we didn't have anything to do with the approval of that house in the rear.
But yeah, so no, it did not, it did not come up during the design review, um, here, I can say that.
And then, uh, so this, the Monterey Cypress at the right rear corner, um. Th- this is a fast-growing fifty-feet-high and wide and, or more, and, uh, it, the, the plan shows the tree, thank you. Uh, it's planted right out in the corner and it, the, the tree's going to reach the neighbor's house, fill their yards as well and, um. That block, the entire block in Seal Cove, uh, there are no large conifers there, no view blocking trees. And so this seems a poor choice, um, to plunk down unless all the neighbors agreed it was a good idea. Because they're going to share that tree, um, the, um. Okay, so that's all I have now, does the applicant wish to speak? Sorry, um, you have fifteen minutes?
Excuse me, uh, Chair?
Oh, yes.
Um, I had a couple of questions.
Did I leave you out? I'm so sorry.
I can ask now.
I'm so sorry.
No, I, I liked your discussions, but, uh, uh, my question is that, um. Uh, I'm looking at many of these, um, faults that run close to, uh, this parcel. So, um, my question really comes from is. Have, do we have any information about the activity of, uh, these faults, like the Seal Cove and the San Gregorio Fault?
So, um, that was, uh, analysis done in the, um, geotech report. Let me see if I have it here.
I didn't see much, um, about that.
Uh, I, I think the conclusion of the geotechnical analysis was that, um. There were not any active faults on this particular site, is that, uh, safe to say, Cano?
Uh, yeah, the, the geotech report, uh, concluded that, um. Yeah, that there were no active faults on the site, it's, uh, it did, uh, analyze the faults that are nearby. Um, and for. Shows, and let me see, um, and there's also. So, uh, yeah, there's also, um, a, play in plate four, there's also the, uh. It shows the earthquake zones that, uh, the Seal Cove that are kind of closer to the airport, to the, uh, east of the. Of the subject site, but there were no, uh, the conclusions were that there were, uh, it was of low concern to that, to that site. Uh, there's about twenty-two percent chance of the San Andreas Fault, um. Causing a, you know, earthquake, um, but, uh, but yeah, there were. Uh, the conclusions of the geological report say that it wasn't an issue for the property.
Okay, so, um, even during the nineteen oh six, uh, earthquake, uh, on the San Andreas Fault. Uh, there was really no impact on, all the way to this parcel?
Uh, there, there is potential, uh, impact from, uh, from earthquakes, but there are no faults that directly pass, uh, you know, through the, um. Through the subject property, but there are all, there's all, there's, you know, always a risk of, uh, of, you know, impacts from. Uh, earthquakes, uh, in the area.
Okay, and the Seal Cove Fault, uh, do we know how far it is from the property?
Yeah, I can, I can show you here.
Uh, distance wise.
See, I don't have an exact distance, I have a, um, illustration that I can show you.
Yeah, I'm looking at this plate four.
Mm-hmm, that shows it.
Yeah, right, okay, so we don't know that, okay?
I can, yeah, I'd have to go through and, and read the, uh, the report, I'm sure it, uh, it shows it there.
Okay, okay, tha- that's fine, that's all I have at this time, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, does the applicant wish to speak at this time? Uh, you have fifteen minutes? Mister Sharma?
Um, Janet, I see Raj Sharma on the panelist, but I see Sanjay Sharma as an attendee. So I'm going to allow them to speak, I believe they might be with the attendees, one second. There we go.
Hi, so, so from what I'm concluding from this is that the variance is going to be approved?
Hmm, no, there was, well, they're still discussing that, so this is, this is your time to just kind of talk about your project and, uh, and. Yeah, be an advocate for your project, anything you want to say, uh, about your project, but there, yeah, it's still in discussion.
Okay, sure, uh, so initially, like, when, when the project went through design review, the design review hearing with, uh. Sam and Taylor County, the, the planning department approved everything so that we, we assumed everything was ready to go. So we've already invested quite a few resources and time, energy, and effort and money into the project. And we've paid quite a lot of consultants and, uh, we've even had our project, uh, go through the building department and, uh. We're just completing some corrections at the moment and, uh, we're just getting ready to pull a permit, so we've already gotten this far in the project. And if we would have to make any changes, it would just cause the, uh, significant hardship. So my issue was like, why this issue wasn't picked up earlier on?
Um, I, I can, um, address that, Mister Sharma, um, so, uh. You are right now attending the hearing on the coastal development permit, which I'm sure you were informed is the discretionary decision. We always recommend that our applicants obtain their discretionary approvals before attempting to. Uh, uh, obtain a building permit, and so, uh, you apparently, um. Took the risk involved with applying concurrently. Um, the discretionary decision on the coastal development permit needs to establish that your project is consistent. With the county's local coastal program, the analysis that went through the design review was specific to the architectural design. The, uh, policies that are before the planning commission currently address a. Host of important coastal resource issues, including the issues that you've heard discussed today. So, um, if there's been, um, investment into the final design of this. Prior to obtaining the coastal permit, then that's, um, a risk an applicant can take, we don't recommend it, but. I, it sounds like that is the situation you're in, so, um. Unless you have more to say about your project, I'd recommend that the commission continue with their deliberations.
Uh, no, no, go ahead, thank, thank you.
Do commissioners have any questions for Mister Sharma? Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Ramirez.
Can, can you hear me okay? Because the, the sound was coming really broken, okay, um, yeah. Um, Mrs. Sharma, Mister Sharma, um, do you understand what we're discussing right now? That, you know, we, we're going over, uh, the facts of the project and trying to understand that, you know, um. That your, your lot sits in a, uh, in a dangerous area and that we need to determine if. Um, it should even be allowed to be developed, so, um, and I, and I think, uh. It is our responsibility to make sure that, you know, you have a chance to, uh, to understand that you are getting into. A situation where, um, you will be in a, a dangerous area. And if you're willing to take the risk of that, and also for the, for us to also make sure that the county. Is not liable later on, um. I- i- in case that, you know, your house has to be demolished, and so I think we're trying to, uh, uh, assess that situation at the moment.
So. How, how about, um, just purchasing the appropriate, um, home insurance policies that, uh, cover those risks? Is, is that another way to, uh, minimize any risks in the near future? With the appropriate insurance policies to protect us and anybody in the area as well?
Uh, I'm sure you will have your own, um, you know, uh, way of, uh, insuring, uh, your house. But I think that, um, at some point, I think I would like for Mister Fox maybe to address, um. You know, some of the points that we have to see, uh, if the additional comments, um, suggestions by the California Coastal Commission. Um, addressed this, this point that we're talking about that, you know, I think we, we want to make sure that the county in the future is not, uh. Uh, liable in case that, you know, this, this property has to be condemned, um.
And if we, um, show you evidence of insurance, uh, w- will that be enough evidence to take any, uh. Burden off your guys' shoulders in the, in the potential future?
Uh, I'm, I'm sure the, the county can comment to that, but, um, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know. If you understand that we're just going over all the issues associated with your property right now.
Okay, alright.
Uh, through the chair, if, if I may, I understood that to be a, a question directed to me.
Yes.
Um. The, the concern that the commission has about the effect that development of this parcel might have. On county resources in the event of future bluff retreat or other scenarios. That, um, are analyzed in the staff report and in the comment letters, um, is certainly something that the commission can. Can concern itself with, but it's not the case that the commission needs to specially condition any projects. Uh, in order to allay risks to the county, legal risks to the county. The law is the law and it does not automatically provide that the county is, um. Has a legal duty to do particular things, um, that are caused by development in the county. Um, the county may have a legal duty to maintain access on a particular roadway, but that is not changed by whether or not. The planning commission approves a permit for development on that, uh, on, on that road. It, it, the, these, these decisions are made at the policy and programmatic level. Um, they aren't necessarily the accumulation of individual project approvals by the commission. So I, I don't want the commission to think that somehow they have to be the guardians of the county's Fisk. Um, and its, its treasury, uh, with regard to legal risks imposed by development. What the planning commission and the planning department are asked to do by the board of supervisors is to administer the rules for how property gets developed. So long as you are focused on that task of applying the rules that are set out by the board of supervisors, by the coastal commission. By the local coastal program, um, and others, if you're administering those rules logically and fairly. Then the county has as much protection as the law is ever going to give it from, uh, calamities like, uh, a collapsing bluff. And we obviously in the county council's office see all kinds of claims that the county is responsible for, things that happen on private property. Um, it takes a pretty clever lawyer to come up with an argument for why the government is responsible for compensating a private property owner. For injury to that private property, um, and only when the facts support it and the law supports it. Do we have any concern about that happening? So, in other words, it's not necessary for you to agonize about whether or not. The owner of a property is taking a personal risk to themselves by applying for a permit and obtaining a permit pursuant to the rules. That we set out for them, we do not become the backup insurance for everyone's house that is constructed. Uh, authorized by the planning department and the planning commission and the board of supervisors. We only become liable for things that the law makes us liable for, and I don't want you to be concerned that you have to make individual judgment calls. On the basis of whether or not a house is too risky for the person who proposes to build it. Um, you should instead stay focused on the public concern of, does the project comply with the rules that we've set out for projects? In order to minimize risks to the public, um, not necessarily to, uh, the owners themselves or to the county as an institution. Because there are other, there are other, uh, agencies and functions that, that look out for that problem.
Alright, thank you, that addresses my question.
Mr. Satakris, do you have questions for the applicant?
No, I don't.
Mr. Gupta?
I do. Is Mr. Sharma still there?
Yes, I'm still, I'm still here.
Okay. First question, how long have you owned this parcel?
We've owned this parcel since like 2020.
2020, okay. And you were aware of that, that this parcel is in a geological hazard area?
No, I, I wasn't aware of that. I just know that when we did our geotechnical reports and reports with the geology consultant, your guys' geotechnical department approved everything. So I didn't get any pushback from them regarding any of those issues at the time.
Okay. And when you did the proposed design for the residence that you want to build, was it ever considered to keep it to the size that so that the, we don't so the garage can be pushed back and we don't have this variance issue?
Yeah, like when we initially submitted our plans for a design review, there were no comments or anything that was addressed regarding that. So
Sorry, I, I missed some part of it. Could you repeat that?
When we submitted to design review, there was no issue about this that was brought up. And also like I was saying with the geotechnical and geology reports, everything was approved by you guys' departments. So there were no concerns that came up at the time that I would have thought to myself that this would have been an issue.
Okay. So, so any faults or erosion, these were not, to your understanding, these were not pointed out to you as issues. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. We, we've gone through an extensive design review process, a design review hearing process and submitted documents to many of you guys' departments like prior to getting to the point where we've been working on our plans for plan check. So there, there were no red flags that were brought to my attention or else have invested this much resources into the project. And we're already close to getting ready to pull a building permit. So this will definitely be a major financial setback for us.
Yeah, I think that part has already been addressed by Director Bonavite. So, okay, thank you. No more questions.
Mr. Hassan, do you have any questions?
This is home for you or is it for speculation sale?
This is a home for my family. So this is my father's property and he's building it for me and my family to live in. So we're, we're definitely really excited to move in and we've met all the neighbors. We go hiking on the trail like every few days. So it definitely already feels like home to us. And if it gets taken away, it's just, not just devastating financially, but you know, emotionally as well.
Okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
I just have a question about the Monterey Cypress in the back corner. Does that had you thought about your neighbors when you decided to put the tree there? I, I just, I don't.
Our neighbors don't seem to have a problem with the trees. Like during the design review hearing, we, we were having a conversation with them and also beforehand. So there, there was no issues brought up regarding the trees. But if there's any changes that any of the neighbors would want us to make, we're more than happy to do it. So the, the neighborhood looks beautiful and it's pleasing to the eye for everybody.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open public comment and I'll turn this portion over to Ms. Luhon.
Chair, we're now opening public comments for item number one. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. If you are calling by telephone, you can press star nine to raise or unraise your hand. And right now I do see two people with their hands raised. We'll first call on Lenny Roberts, followed by Sanal. Lenny, please accept this invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Okay, good morning. Can you hear me commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I sent a letter. I'm Lenny Roberts speaking for Green Foothills. We have a longstanding interest in the Seal Cove area. We were involved when the William Cotton Report was done, the geological hazards zoning was established for this area. And we followed a number of proposed projects. Most of them have been in the zone three of the Seal Cove area, which although it's the most, the least hazardous, it still has significant hazards. And as I detail in my letter, projects within zone three generally need to do trenching to determine whether or not there is a fault trace that crosses the property. And if there is one, they need, the house needs to be redesigned because one doesn't want to cross the fault trace with a structure because the fault traces can move during earthquakes or other movement of the, of the land. Geologists have described this area as a geologic hazards park because it has so many very interesting to geologists processes going on with both landsliding and faulting. The Seal Cove Fault is just probably half a mile to the east and it is an active fault. And so this area is very much associated with the faulting associated with the Seal Cove Fault. So I would, and I have not seen a copy of the geotechnical report, which it wasn't provided as part of the staff report. And I understand, I don't know if you've been provided with it now. But I would very much like to have an opportunity to look at it. And I think it's, I think it would be a very good decision of yours to continue this to at least the next hearing so that the questions in my letter could be more fully, I could, I could review the geotechnical report and see if it, if it adequately answers the various questions that I've asked. As you know, this is, this is the, the Seal Cove area is in the S1, S105 zoning district requires a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. And this was established because the board of supervisors merged the parcels that were part of an old antiquated subdivision back in the, in early, in the, I think it was 1980, so that they could ensure adequate area for flexibility in locating a home to avoid building across fault traces that were known to exist in Seal Cove. This is a significantly non-conforming lot at only 4761 square feet. Thanks for pointing out that 18% of the parcels in the Seal Cove area are either equal to or smaller than this parcel. So I don't believe you can make the findings, particularly that this is a unique parcel that would allow you to make the findings for the variance. Let's see, I also wanted to bring to look through my notes here. I also would like to see a copy of the coastal commission's letter. It's, it's quite frustrating not to have all the information as, as a member of the public who I, you know, I'm, I know the staff is aware that we have a longstanding interest. It would be very helpful if we could be provided with all the information that your commission is considering. We are also concerned about the bluff retreat rate that was used in the graphic and having a verbal update to the, today about the future sea level rise and wave action and that's effect on the rate of bluff retreat. It would be also important for us to, you know, be able to review that. So we would greatly appreciate it if you could continue this. Also, I don't, and, and as a fundamental matter, I don't think you can make the findings for the variance. And I think there's a little more staff work that needs to be done on this. Thank you very much.
If you have comments, I do see one more hand raised. Louis Richardson, please unmute your microphone and begin speaking. You'll have five minutes.
Okay, can you hear me? I, I'm Lou Richardson, the fellow that did the geologic investigation for this. As far as the faulting goes, it hasn't been mentioned, but there was a geotechnical investigation done on this property in 2000 by earth investigation consultants. And they did a fault trench along the southern property line and found no faulting. Also, there have been a couple of other investigations a little further to the east where they have found no active faulting. They may have found faulting, but it isn't considered active, which is within the last 11,000 years. The report that you have as far as the Seal Cove study area was done in 1980, which is like 30 years ago. Since then, the Alcos Priolo Act reviews have removed some of the faults from their earlier maps. And the one that you see that you've seen in, in my report is the latest one. This site is not within an Alcos Priolo Zone. And nobody has found any indication of active faulting within this area. Again, there has been a trench done on this property looking for a fault. And none was found. The other aspect, as far as the edge of the bluff goes, these things don't retreat back in a vertical form. So you're not going to have a hundred foot cliff next to the road. There's about 20 feet of unconsolidated terrace materials on top of bedrock. And usually what happens is groundwater infiltrates down rainwater and, and other forms of water from runoff infiltrate down to that 20 feet perch on top of the bedrock formation and flow out and seep on the bluff. And that undercuts this upper terrace deposit, which then collapses and works its way back. So at the roadside, you would probably have the, the terrace deposit retreating back to the road, but not the vertical part of the cliff. We've defined the edge of the, of the bluff as the undisturbed area that has not eroded in the terrace deposits. That's all I have to say.
Thanks for your comment. I do see, I saw another hand raised, but it lowered. Let's give it a couple of seconds. Okay, we do have Barry from Moss Beach. Barry, please accept the invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Could you repeat? I, I missed.
Go ahead. You can say your comment.
Oh, okay. So I live at 75 Proceda, just down the street from the project. I hope the project gets approved. My, but my speculation is if this does not get approved, then the the property that's up for review soon on the corner of Proceda and Ocean, which is about the same size. I assume that that wouldn't get approved either, since it's in the same location. But I say let them build. It's a nice looking house. So thanks for listening. I'm going to unmute now or to mute.
Thank you. Looks like that is all the raised hands we have, Chair. Oh. I do see a Jesse with a hand raised, but then he lowered it again. Let me just, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Fantastic. Sorry. My name is Jesse Gursa. I'm the, I'm designer on the project and I've been trying to get on. I wanted to speak on behalf of the Sharmas, but I was able, Sanjay came on instead. So I'll try to make this quick. We're not here voluntarily for the variance to, to get the overage on the house for this property. What had happened was that the Sharmas had hired a, a previous designer that had designed a house on this property with the footprint and lot coverage and the maximum allowable floor area. As we went through the process and submitted to the planning department, they reviewed it. They deemed it complete. Everything complied. We then went to, or what the previous designer went to, design review for the the CRDC. That project was denied due to the reason that the architectural aesthetics didn't comply to the, the county's regulations and so forth. So during that time, naturally the Sharmas wanted to get the process rolling due to time limitations and they engaged all their consultants to get rolling with the process. So in that time, when the CRDC denied the project based on aesthetics, they engaged me and hired me to redesign the floor plan and elevations to comply to the county's design regulations and so forth. Looking at the plans that I received from the Sharmas and from the previous designer, I elected to keep the footprint the same that was previously reviewed by planning to not have the other consultants revise all their plans for landscaping, civil, geo, et cetera. So what I did was I, I designed the house. I made it as beautiful as I could for the neighborhood and for the neighbors. We went back and resubmitted to planning with revised plans. There again, it went through without any issues. We then went to our, to the CRDC. They reviewed it. They had a couple of comments. They liked the design. I changed it. They approved it. We then proceeded into construction documents. We engaged all of our consultants to revise all the plans and we got the plans together, submitted to the building department. And basically, after we, after we received our first cycle of building comments, we received a comment or an email from Canoa stating that there was discrepancy in our lot coverage. To our surprise, we were, we were just besides ourselves of how this all went through the whole planning review process. And then we, we're, we're basically told later that we need to revise the plans and, and reduce the footprint by approximately 337 square feet. Knowing how it is to have to redesign something in that fashion, it was a huge hardship on the Sharmas and on myself and on our consultants. So to make a long story short, you know, we would have revised the plans if we, if we were told earlier that there was an issue, but we were never told there was an issue until the last moment. We have a building comments that were very minor that all of our consultants had replied to. And we're basically ready to almost resubmit our plans to, to get a permit. And so now we're at the stage as at requesting the variance that, you know, we, we really didn't want it, requested variance and you know, to say, you know, this house is in keeping with the neighborhood. And I mean, given the house that's built behind it, you know, we, we never had a chance to see those plans. So, you know, we, we couldn't design according to what they were designing. But we did what we did best that the county would approve. So to make a long story short, we, we appreciate your review of our project. And again, we really appreciate your, your outlook on this. And we're, we're really excited to build a nice house for the neighborhood. And the Sharmas are aware of, you know, the conditions of the site. And, and that's why we have the consultants providing the information for the county for approval for our project. So again, Chair and Commissioners, I really So again, Chair and Commissioners, I really appreciate all your insight and hopefully you find this project approvable for us. Thank you so much.
You, those are all the hands that are raised here.
Okay. Seeing that no additional members of the public wish to speak, if there are no objections, public comment on this item is now closed. The staff wish to speak on any of the issues raised at this point.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of points in response to the comments from Lenny Roberts. My understanding is the geotechnical report is attached to the staff report is attachment D. Canoak, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if there's different.
That is the, yeah, that's the, it was the geological report that analyzed the bluff retreat. And the geotechnical report was not, was not attached.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And just with regard to the coastal commission comments, those came in as an email yesterday. So that was, I think.
Yeah, I just, I just found them this morning and was able to put in my presentation and relay them to everybody.
So that's the only reason why it wasn't distributed earlier. And then just in response to the comments from the architect, I think there was an implication made that staff, by calling out discrepancies, and then when they, we got the correct information, concluded that, well, now this correct information requires variance. I don't, I wouldn't consider that as an error on staff's part. If there were discrepancies in numbers in the plans that were submitted, I think we did the appropriate thing by making sure we had the facts correctly. If those facts revealed that this project requires variance, that's, that's where we're at now. And I don't think that's a fault on behalf of the planning and building department. So that concludes my comments.
Okay, now we'll move on to Commissioner comments and deliberation, and we'll start with Commissioner Ramirez.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, it is a challenging project, I think. But, um, you know, just touching back on what Lenny Roberts' letter said. I believe that, you know, even though we don't have their geological report, I mean, it is stated that the the geotechnical part of the county has reviewed it. And as the, the geotechnical gentleman that just spoke to us has stated that there has been a trench exploration done on this thing. And to me, that's really the main thing that stands out. That I think it is a the, the project sits within a, an area that I think that is feasible to build, knowing that it may have a lifetime of 50 to 75 years. So that's why I was trying to understand if the owner knows that, that, you know, at some point they may actually lose their house. But I think a lifetime of 50 to 75 years, it's a pretty good return on their investment if that's what they're willing to do. What was the other thing? Anyway, yeah, that's, that's my, my, my comment on this. So I'm leaning towards supporting this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Santa Cruz.
I have a question on, on Lenny's Robert letters stating that she didn't have in the report was not included any geotechnical report. So I'm confused. Was that included, Steve, or it wasn't included?
So as I understand it, the geologic report was included. That's attachment D. And as Canoa pointed out, the geologic report looks at, you know, the soil conditions and the rock formations beneath the homes. The geotechnical analysis of site stability was not attached to the staff report. So Ms. Roberts did not have the opportunity to review that.
Okay, okay. And then is that part of the process that everything has to be included so the public will have an opportunity to, to talk about it, Steve?
You know, that it's a tough call. We try and provide full information without overburdening the commissioners with huge reports because many of our files are, you know, thousands and thousands of pages long. So there is an effort to kind of narrow down to what staff believes the commissioners will need to look at. And, you know, what the public will be interested in. I think there's a takeaway here that when we're in Seal Cove, we should include the geotechnical reports as an attachment because that's going to be an issue here. And the fact that we didn't is unfortunate.
Okay, but the public will have an opportunity, even if you don't include it on the commission report. The public will have an opportunity to sort of like click and.
Well, absolutely. I mean, look, I'm sure Canoa would be happy to provide any interested party with a copy of the report. I think the point that Lenny is making is that once the planning commission makes a decision, then that decision is final unless appealed. And rather than having to go through the deal process, they, she, she's requesting that you continue it. So she can at least review and comment before you take action.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's it for me. Chair Ketchum.
Mr. Gupta.
I appreciate Ms. Roberts pointing us to certain things where we and county can improve upon. And Steve Monowitz has already addressed that. And I think it's a good idea to put a link there so that whoever wants to look at it can go to that link and take a look at it and not feel, not feel that some information is not, not being provided to them. So that's, that's the only thing about that. Thank you, Ms. Roberts, for that. I think, I feel that the that I am satisfied with what the geotechnical consultant report has provided in terms of information. And rest of it is the applicant's risk that they, that they take. If we only look at 50 years of stability in that home, then at least at this point, it appears that most likely they'll get it. So the design of the home looks pretty good. And I will support it. Thank you. One more thing I want to add is I want to make sure that the extra conditions that were mentioned are clearly included in, in attachment A. Because sometimes we don't come to know whether they got included or not. So that is important that we include those. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. I understood what the geologist was telling us. My background in geography, this is always of interest to me. None of the half dozen homes that we have reviewed during my time on the commission, they have all been very consistent, even though they've been done by different people over different times. And I don't see anything different that would make me come to a different conclusion. I think we're very aware what will happen there. It's a matter of time, won't be in my lifetime most likely. But storms are becoming more violent. Things could change overnight and may never happen. It's just the way, nature of things out there. So that's understood. I think it's by all parties. It's well understood. And that's the important part. The variance part, I think, is it's, it's a very small number, little clip of an area that visually does not impact anything. And it is, to me, it's of, not of a consequence, so I could let that go. Your comments about the tree is very valid. Trees are of that nature. I'm not native to the area. And, and it will, you know, doesn't, will impact the people who are to, to the east of the house. And it's going to be a good sized tree. Unless I hear something different, I, I see no reason to deny this. But I'm still open.
Thank you. I don't feel comfortable aboding on, I wouldn't, I can't consider approving this today just alone by the fact I haven't seen the coastal commission staff and their proposed conditions and concerns about all that. I also think that the water and sewer mainline extensions into, you know, extending into these areas that are going to need to retreat. I would like that to be part of the project. And I, I can't make the findings for the variance. I think it would set a precedent for the neighborhood. There are other solutions. And so I would prefer a continuance to address the gaps in the knowledge at least. And other than that, I, I couldn't vote for this today.
Can I ask a question of you? What is it you wish out of the continuance specifically is for staff to come back for? What is it you're looking for to help you make the decision?
Well, I would like the bluff retreat analysis to be more in line with what we saw the coastal commission do when they reviewed the Arbor Lane project on appeal and came up with a much more conservative number and the house would require to be redesigned. And actually, I don't think they have done anything, made it in that direction. Every, I don't see how you put a okay, what are we, what are we saying here? Yeah, I can't vote for the variance. So unless you came back getting rid of that, then I would still need to vote against it. I can't make the findings there, but the core of it is the bluff retreat analysis. And also the, where it says the geotech report would analyze what hazards and how this would affect the foundation. Because as I said, at Arbor Lane, the coastal commission said no deep piers and tieback foundations. So we need to know whether that is going to be required or how that would all work out. Is that answered your question?
Yeah.
So.
To me, very valid concerns.
Any other?
Yeah, if I may, I, I am total agreement with you, Lisa. I lean more toward a continuance just to find out more of the fact that you're mentioning. And hearing more observations brought up to our attention by, by Lenny Roberts. So at this point, I feel more like a continuance rather than approval because of the number of variants and the concern that you're addressing at this point.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. I, well, I'm on the, on the opposite side. Ms. Ketchum, I believe that based on the report and that I think I saw in, in the witness statement that came forward, I feel that we have what we need to make a recommendation right now. I think especially with, with the suggestions by the, the California Coastal Commission, I think especially makes it a stronger point that that addresses some, some of the issues about, you know, making sure that the, the applicants understand that they're in a dangerous area and they're taking full responsibility for that. So I don't know. I think we should, we should probably try to see if we can come up with with a recommendation right now and the votes for it. And if not, then we can always vote, do another to see if we can come back on another day with more information. But based on what I see, I personally don't need any more information. I think that it can be, we can suggest that, that the, the information that you are seeking should be put forward and made, made, make, made available to anyone that wants to see it. Anyway, that's my, my standing at this point.
The, for me, it doesn't work to put information out of the fact on the website. The conditions, I don't know, perhaps it was when the planner was showing the conditions of approval that were recommended by the coastal commission staff, which is a whole bunch of texts flying by. And I'm sorry, I can't absorb it. And, you know, perhaps he could read it again, but even then I need, I just need more time to read and absorb things and think about it. There was too much missing leading into a meeting today. And so I would prefer a continuance. The
Okay.
We have no clear majority here. Does anybody?
Well, I, I would like to make a motion and see if there's a second and we can go for that if you don't mind.
Well, if you, if you move the project approval and then I don't know, I guess I would defer to the more experienced members of the commission as to whether it makes sense to go first before asking for a continuance or, or to do that second or.
Well.
I prefer to always to have all the information out there, even if you're going to doesn't change your vote, to make sure you have the information to make an informed decision. So I'll support a continuance. And hearing that Santa Cruz and Ketchum both wanted, I think that's the majorities. So I'll put forth that this agenda one item, we continue to update on certain.
All right, I'll second that. I'll second that based on, on the fact that I think we're leaning more now to continue it. So.
Before a vote is taken, may I ask just for a little bit of clarification along the lines of what Commissioner Hanson requested? Because I want to be clear in terms of what you'd like staff to bring back. And so as I understood it, it, based on the previous discussion, you're looking for not only the geotechnical report, but an updated report that addresses sea level rise and addresses foundation design requirements. Is that correct?
Um, that's most of it. Basically, what the coastal commission considered when they came up with the bluff retreat for Arbor Lane.
So, but I mean, that, that would, because I, you know, the planning and building staff can't produce that on our own. It would have to come from the applicant's geotechnical engineer. So I think I just want to make sure that we're providing that engineer with appropriate direction. And so you, the commission's request would be for those technical reports to be updated in a manner that's consistent with the same changes that the coastal commission made to the Arbor Lane project. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know what you mean by same changes, but basically that approach.
Same approach, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other point is, and I don't think there's consensus here, is there are some commissioners who believe the design should be changed to eliminate the variance. And I think. And I think the applicant is has already expressed their position that to go back to make those type of changes is a real
Can we actually, can we get a consensus on that? Because I'm not, I'm not in favor of any changes to the design. And I believe Commissioner Hanson also did not. So so I need to know i- if that's also part of what we're asking for. Because I think we're we're a little bit on, you know, the numbers are, I think, close to basically leaving it the way it is.
I'm concerned about with the variance. I'm concerned about the precedent in for that neighborhood. And I would prefer to see to accomplish this, to see a garage exception, maybe a one car garage or some other approach that is generally used and and not start introduce a variance and then and then going forward. Well, you know, if I buy it, the next person feels it wasn't fair if they don't get their variance. Also, if it's a one car garage that that eliminates the setback, you know, there are other things as you look at the floor plan and and you see, you know, okay, so three bedroom, two bath or whatever it was. I mean, you could so maybe shrink the luxury bathroom and the walk-in closet. I don't, I don't know, but there are a number of choices there other than going with the variance. That's just my opinion.
If if I may, at the moment, there is a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hanson with a second by Commissioner Ramirez. If the motion is in order and while the chair hasn't said either way, because it's usually not our practice to be that formal. The question would be whether Commissioner Hanson wishes to amend his motion to include any direction with regard to the design. And if that if that is an amendment made by Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Ramirez would have the right to withdraw his second and call for a vote on the motion as modified by Commissioner Hanson. So one elegant way to find out whether or not there's support is to ask whether or not Commissioner Hanson would like to call for a vote on the motion as presented by him or whether he wishes to make an amendment and then those other dominoes would fall and the commission could proceed based on how each commissioner wishes to vote.
Well, my continue is just for more information and I'm happy to leave it that way. I think it could be really resolved if we could just either Commissioner Santa Cruz or Gupta said variance either is not a consequence or is of consequence. We could know that real quick.
So if I may through through the chair, I interpret that to mean that Commissioner Hanson's motion for a continuance with the clarifications requested by Mr. Monowitz is still on the table with a second by Commissioner Ramirez.
Yep.
Is that the case?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Can we hear from Commissioner Gupta?
Before before I vote, in the past, even though I I am not quite against the variance part, especially especially the setback. Setback at the garage corner, front setback. But in the past, we have approved second space as being an open parking space rather than a full fledged garage. So if if that is something that my colleagues would like to consider, that is something we we could propose, but but like Commissioner Ketchum said that there are options. It would be good to have the information that we are looking for, but
Well, if I may, since I second this motion, I I would like to be certain that, or, you know, to me, again, the the variance it's not important. I mean, it's important in the sense that we, I think we should allow it in this case. But if 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 we're going to go back and say, no, they're going to have to redesign it and and so that there's no variance. Then in that case, I will withdraw my 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 second. So I need to know that the the variance stands before I can say that I will second the motion.
Commissioner Santa Cruz, you have a comment?
Yeah, you know, it's not only about the variance. It's about the more geotechnical information.
No, but hold on, Mr. Santa Cruz, I I can, I'm I'm okay with asking all the information about the geotechnical, the bluff, anything else. The only thing that I'm I'm not comfortable with is removing the variance for the front. For the front of the house.
Okay, may I, I I just let me explain my point of view and I may you disagree or agree with me that. But for me, and my point of view is that the motion at its stance, my understanding and only including the variance, but also requiring more geographical or geotechnical information as stated by Lenny Robert. And then also I heard that there is a comparable project in the neighborhood and we I would like to know a little bit more about it because like the one of the participants said, if we agree or disagree on this specific project without the all the required information, what will be the status of this other project that is coming up in the near future in the neighborhood? I think in my point of view, the motion that Commissioner Hanson presented addressed the issue of the continuance to gather all these facts as stated by Lisa and Commissioner Hanson. So whether you want a second or not, we need to proceed with that and not stuck with all the details, whether we need a continuance or we don't need a continuance. And and later on, determine what is it that we need in order to continue that.
Yeah, true, but the director was asking for direction and on what they were supposed to bring back. And I'm just saying that the the variance for the front is not something that needs to come back as a change. Everything else, the bluff, the geotechnical report on the other areas, that's fine. But that that's, you know, the director, the director was asking for a specific direction and I'm just saying I'm not okay with ask with them having to come back with change to the the variance for the front of the house.
Chair Ketchum, my observations are that, you know, there's not a clear position on that amongst the commissioners. And that the motion to continue leaves the question about the variance open and that appears to be not what Commissioner Ramirez was in favor of. So Commissioner Ramirez, it appears to me, and I hope I'm not being presumptuous, that perhaps rescinding your second is the appropriate action to take.
That is correct. I resent my second.
So do we have a second?
I have a second for the motion for Commissioner Hanson.
Are we through with discussion now?
Yep.
Okay, your motion is second. Roll call, please. No.
Yes.
I, yes.
No.
Yes. Motion passes. With, let me see, I have this right, with Commissioner Gupta and and Ramirez opposed. Trouble with the first and the last names. Okay. Thank you, everyone. And moving on now. Oh, move on now to the second item on the regular agenda. Will staff introduce the item? Thank you.
Item number two, Sanji Buddha, appellate Bob Zimmerman, file number PLN two zero zero dash zero zero one three zero. Location is two five zero Bonita Road in Portola Valley. Give me one second.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Let me just share my screen here. All right. So this morning I will be presenting an appeal of a grading permit for two fifty Benita Road, Lost Tranquilles Woods. This is file number PLN twenty twenty dash zero zero one three zero. This grading permit was approved by the Community Development Director on June twenty third, twenty twenty one, and was appealed by Bob Zimmerman on July eighth, twenty twenty one. The approved permit allows one seven hundred and thirty one cubic yards of grading, including five hundred and forty four cubic yards of cut, one hundred and eighty seven cubic yards of fill. And this is to improve the existing septic system leach field, construct a flat lawn area using retaining walls and create stairways and pathways. There are five retaining walls proposed. Four of those five are peer supported poured concrete walls, and there are nine significant trees that are proposed for removal. This project has been reviewed by the Department of Public Works, the Building Department, our geotechnical engineer, drainage engineer, Wilo consultant, county arborist, environmental health services, Cal Water, and Woodside Fire. Here we have a overview of the neighborhood. The site here is outlined in yellow. The appellant lives to the south of the site, which is uphill. And then down further on the screen, you'll see the mid pen open space Coal Creek Reserve. And here we have an aerial photo of the site with the applicant's site highlighted in yellow and then the appellate site highlighted in red. And again, that is uphill of the applicant's site. And the area of the proposed grading work primarily takes place within the red circle on the applicant's site. So this is the grading plan for the property. It's now been rotated. So the appellate site would be on the lower right hand corner. The property line is outlined in orange and then the house is outlined in green. And the proposed retaining walls are outlined in red here. And then the leach field lines are in turquoise. And then this is the proposed landscaping plan with those same colors carried forward, same orientation. So you can see they are proposing a significant amount of landscaping for this area. And here is a profile view of the proposed grading changes. So the existing grade is on the left hand side and then the proposed grade with the retaining walls are on the right hand side. And some site photos. So these ones are taken from the existing driveway and house. So you're sort of looking up on the area that the grading would take place within. And it's highlighted within the red circles. And then from the opposite orientation, now we're at the top of the hill looking down on the area that the grading would take place within. And again, it's in those red circles. The picture up in the upper right hand corner that's standing in the same location, but looking further uphill towards the appellant's property. And then the picture in the lower left hand corner is again in the same location. Looking across the grade towards the neighbor's property, you can see a bit of their elevated basketball court there. So this property is designated low density residential and was reviewed against a number of policies in the general plan, including policies on grading, soil resources, natural resources, visual policies, as well as wastewater management and found to conform to the general plan. The zoning district is R one S one oh eight. There are no structures proposed in this, but the retaining walls do conform to the setbacks and is found to conform to the zoning district. The proposed landscaping was reviewed for water efficiency by the county's consultants and found to conform to the county's Wilo regulations. And the grading regulations, again, it's seven hundred and thirty one cubic yards of grading, which is mostly shifting some of the bulk of the hill from the upper area to the lower hillside. The majority of the retaining walls that are proposed are less than four and a half feet. There is one area, the lowest one, that gets up to about seven and a half feet, right near where the driveway is. There are nine trees proposed for removal, two black oaks, five bays and two medrons. Six of those nine are in poor condition and could qualify for tree removal permits on their own. Staff and the county geotechnical consultants have reviewed this and determined it complies with the grading ordinance. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration were prepared and circulated for public comment from April twenty sixth to May eighteen, twenty twenty one. During this time period, the appellant submitted two sets of comments and these comments were responded to by staff and the applicant's geotechnical engineer. So the next few slides will go through the summary of the appeal in five points. The appeal text in bold was taken right from the appeal documents while staff response is abbreviated from what you'll find in the staff report. The appeal documents were that were submitted are attached as an attachment to the staff report. So the first point is that the work will destabilize the hillside above it and compromise the appellant's property and future usage and other adjacent uphill properties to the south. And the staff report is the staff response is that the project shifts the bulk of the hillside to lower elevations and has the peer supported retaining walls. And this analysis was done to show that this will slightly increase the level of slope stability. The applicant has submitted a geotechnical report and four supplementary letters, which were reviewed and conditionally approved by the county's geotechnical consultants. The second appeal point is that analysis, the analysis and proposed mitigations have not considered the upward shift in rainfall intensity, duration and frequency curves that are accompanying climate change and will become more problematic. The appellant does not want to be sued or held liable when the inevitable drainage, inundation or landslide issues manifest. So this application was reviewed by the county drainage engineer. And again, when this appeal came, she looked at it again and pointed me towards the county drainage manual, which does consider the effects of climate change and the shifts in storm frequency and intensification. However, because this project creates or replaces less than seven hundred and fifty square feet of imperious surface, it doesn't trigger stormwater mitigation measures. Notwithstanding that, the project is anticipated to slow the flows of stormwater runoff on the property due to the terracing and the retaining walls, which will reduce the overall risk of erosion and landslides and is not anticipated to exacerbate any potential downstream flooding or landslide issues. The third point is dismissing the drainage path is only wet during rain events, and that is by definition not biological habitat. ignores the reality recognized throughout the southwest of flash floods during intense rain events. So this comment is referring to the drainage pass that's identified on the Lost Tranquilles County Water District map and is not considered a stream under any jurisdiction and does not have sensitive habitat. So on the next slide here, in the upper left hand corner, we have screenshot of this map and the drainage path is this green line going through the property. So I've highlighted it there in a red circle. And as a reminder, the work is taking place in the area of the blue circle. Then we have some site photos on the other side and handily, the survey stakes were also still in place. So the property line is delineated in red there. So the yellow arrows show where the drainage path appears to be based on the vegetation and the slopes that we're seeing. And then the red line is the property line. And as you can see, this drainage path actually is not on the property. It's on the neighbor's property to the north. So the drainage path in the map doesn't quite line up. The fourth point was that the appellant was told in 1975 that 250 Benita was considered unbuildable by a realtor and an engineering consultant. And while that may have been the case in 1975, in 2005 and in 2006, the house was built with permits and approval through the county. And the final point of appeal is that there was no surface movement potential map to guideline use decisions at least three properties in the neighborhood of it experienced substantial surface movement and damage. And the applicant's geotechnical consultant reviewed elevation models, aerial photos of the site, did mapping of the landslide features, and reviewed the technical documents used to construct the house. They also did a comparative slope stability analysis to evaluate the potential impact of the proposed site improvements on slope instability and was found to increase slope stability. Yesterday, in Mid-Pennsylvania Regional Open Space submitted comments on this file. Coal Creek Open Space Preserve is approximately 1,000 feet away from the property, as you may remember from the first map. It was right at the bottom of the screen. And they have requested that the conditions of approval be amended to include protocols to reduce the spread of sudden oak death, replacing the two oak trees with acorns sourced from a watershed rather than nursery stock, and replacing the bay trees with an alternative that is known not to spread sudden oak death. These suggestions were reviewed by the county arborist and the applicant, and they both found them to be reasonable. So the following conditions were incorporated into the amended attachment A. So condition number five was modified to specify acorn planting rather than a 15-gallon-sized stalk. And then condition 25 was added for a maintenance surety deposit to ensure that the acorns actually become trees. And then condition 26 was also added to require protocols that minimize the spread of sudden oak death. So given that, we are recommending that the planning commission deny the appeal and uphold the community development director's decision to approve their requested grading permit and make the findings identified in the amended attachment A. And I am happy to answer any photos, and I believe that our staff geotechnical engineer is also available for questions.
Thank you. Do Commissioners have questions for staff? We'll start with Commissioner Ramirez.
No questions at the moment. Thank you.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
No, no question. Very clear. Thank you.
Commissioner Gupta.
Just a quick question is, is the appellant's parcel and the project in question, the parcel, are they kind of adjacent to each other? It appeared that way to me.
Yes, yeah, I can go back to the map that shows them in relationship to each other. So the appellant's is the red property, and then the applicant is the yellow property. So they do share a property line.
Okay, and the landscaping that the applicant wants to do is, I don't know, you can't see me. Is it kind of vertically down?
Shift to the landscape plan here. So the appellant's property would be in the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. It goes approximately halfway across the property. So the property line for the appellant is somewhere around here, if you can see that mouse.
Okay, so that is here. So, yeah, okay. And the red lines that you have drawn here, those are the areas that would be graded, is that?
Yeah, the red lines are the proposed retaining walls.
Retaining walls, but that general area would be graded or filled, is that?
Yes, so this slide shows the profile view. So before, we were looking at it from a top-down perspective. And now we're looking at it as if we were partially in the ground from the side. So this center area is where all the red lines are, and then each one of those red lines is one of these retaining walls. Each of these is a retaining wall here.
Okay, and towards the right side is the appellant's property, right?
From this view, yes, the appellant's property would be up at the top of the hill.
Up there, up there, okay. All right, and I'm just trying to get a feel for what percentage of the total property of the applicant is going to be impacted by this grading and retaining walls.
So I think this view provides that information. So the property lines are in orange on the outside there. So you can see that it's maybe just over a quarter of the property is going to have some grading in it.
Okay. And have we known of any, what they call, shakers or any earthquakes, landslides in the immediate past?
There was a former landslide in this area. It's not in the immediate past based on the geotechnical information. I am going to refer to Sherry, our county geotechnical engineer, to discuss the landslide, the former landslide and its impact on this.
Okay. Would she come later, or is she there right now?
I believe Sherry's on the line. Sherry, could you please respond to the Commissioner's question?
Yes, so I might, let me share a screen. Okay, so this is a supplemental letter that's submitted by the project geotechnical consultant to discuss the possible landslide in the past in the area. And they've done additional test pits and explorations on the site to determine the proposed project stability for this parcel. And you could see the dotted lines enclosed possible past the landslide area. And it is not an active landslide now, so it's way in the past. And then what you could see, they have down this stability analysis, that's a slope stability analysis that shows the site stability for the site. If it's larger than 1.5 over here, we consider it safe. And right now, the existing condition is 2.19, where the proposed condition will be 2.25. So for the landslide concern, we would consider that it is safe and stable.
Thank you. And how long ago was that landslide?
It was more, I'd say more than 50 years ago.
More than 50, okay. All right. Thank you, and I'm just looking at my notes if I have anything else here. Okay, that's all for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
My question is, to put this in context for me, am I correct in interpreting oversimplifying that we're taking out old growth trees to get a lawn?
So there are nine trees proposed for removal. Six of those nine would qualify for removal on their own. They would need, where three of them are related to this development. So six of those nine already have defects. They're leaning, they're unhealthy, they could be removed, as is, without this lawn proposal. The proposal also includes the upgrade of the septic system, so is not solely for landscaping purposes. They are improving their septic system at the same time. And these trees are considered significant trees rather than heritage trees. I can pull up the diameter, but I don't think any of them are really over 20 inches diameter at rest height. I can look that up. Right, the largest diameter is 24 inches, and that is a bay tree.
Oh, so that's hundreds of years old. Okay.
Is that all? Commissioner Hanson, do you have anything else?
No more questions.
Okay. Oh, thank you. The staff graphics on the grading were very helpful. I have, so my question about the lighting plan, it shows a list of fixtures. How do we know if they're dark sky compliant? What is the definition of dark sky compliant? And how can we evaluate whether the quantity and intensity of all these lights affect the dark sky character of the community, which was a concern of the appellant?
Yes, thank you Commissioner Ketchum for raising that question. This was discussed at the last planning commission report, the planning commission meeting. And I did pursue some more information about how we could objectively measure that. And I'm looking through my notes because I don't have it at my fingertips, and I'll find it in a second. But the suggestion from the building official was that we enforce the interest of protecting dark skies by specifying a maximum amount of, I want to say lumens, I'm not sure I have the correct unit of measurement, but there is a method of measuring the brightness of a light, so intensity of a light, that's correct. So I'm happy to find that if that will be a satisfactory approach for addressing your question.
Well, will this be applied when the building, when they evaluate these lights? I mean, because, I mean, it's two parts of this. I want to understand the process, and that doesn't have to happen right at this moment. And the other thing is, as it applies to how this project will be implemented.
Well, and that's my question as well. And perhaps Kelsey, you can explain what sort of lighting is involved with the proposal.
Yes, I was just pulling up the lighting plan here, and I can share this screen. Let me just move it over. They are, all the lighting proposed is downlighting. So they are not proposing any uplighting at this point.
When you say downlighting, is this shielded downlighting so that you don't see it from the side either?
Right, so this is the lighting schedule here. And I've zoomed in a little bit, I can zoom in more if you are having trouble reading this. But they're proposing 33 path lights, zero uplights, eight wall lights of one sort, and 20 wall lights of a different sort. Then I believe these are the wattages and the LED bulbs. And if we shift down here, you can see their locations. So there's a light here, one here, there's a few along the path in the stairway. The most of them are along the stairway here. There are these little symbols. And this would be reviewed again, as Steve alluded to, at the building permit stage. When this is submitted, we could confirm the lights fixture choices and ensure that it is meeting whatever lumens standard we come to.
So the, yeah, the wattage doesn't really help with that. And so at the building permit stage, we'd just like assurance that the overall effect of all these lights adding up, how that, see, I don't know how these things are measured. We only know once we're all put in and they're turned on, it's like, oh my God, what have we done? I mean, we've seen this a couple of times here on the coast. Either people put the lights up without getting permission, or there's just a, it's, you know. I don't know this neighborhood personally, but this seems to be a concern all along. So yes, I would just ask that some careful attention be paid when you're actually reviewing and giving the go-ahead to all these sites. I understand the need for safety on the stairs, but maybe the lawn doesn't need to be illuminated? I don't know, just, that's my, but anyway, thanks for helping me see this, but I guess I, I guess I don't really understand, but.
Chair Ketchum, I did find my notes, and the unit of measurement is Kelvin, degrees Kelvin, actually. And the measurement, the limit specified by the building official is 2,700 degrees Kelvin. So my hope is that we can make sure that the lighting fixtures are within that range at the building permit stage, which I believe will achieve the dark sky compliant objective.
Is that a limit for all the lights combined or per fixture?
Per fixture.
Yeah, I just saying because of the quantity. Okay, let's just let that go. Does the appellant wish to speak? Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. First, I want to thank the Commissioners for the opportunity to address you and raise my concerns about the proposed project's gaps in its planning and its review. With the recent collapse and loss of life in the Surfside, Florida events, which exposed the widespread realization that planning department commissions need to be more active and thorough in their review of project proposals and details of the plan. I appreciate your efforts to assure the suitability and safety of projects in San Mateo County. The proposed site was historically considered unbuildable, and a local construction contractor, Eric LeFolles, has opined on the county's excessively permissive acceptance in certain time periods, particularly while working to rectify excessive landslide damage to neighborhood properties. My first concern is the scale of the proposed earth movement. Referring to this as a grading approval is really under, undercommunicates the impact and scale of the project. As you all know and recognize, 728 or 731 cubic yards of soil is an enormous modification to the hillside. The plans as submitted are not persuasive as to the future stability of the hillside. Among my concerns is the context. The environmental review, item number six, acknowledges that the property is located in a high lines landslide hazard area. The project site is at the foot of the slide or debris apron. The submitted geotechnical report analyzed a single model under dry conditions, not with saturated soils possible in future seismic or rainfall scenarios. Not with saturated soils possible in future seismic or rainfall scenarios. There are gaps in the plant, in the analysis. It is not clear that the geotechnical consultants have actually examined the landslide zone. Immediately adjacent and uphill of the proposed project. The photos we saw are insufficient. And do not really show the uh head of the landslide, which is on my property. I am familiar with the capabilities and limitations of the LiDAR imaging through my lifelong work with NASA. The LiDAR imagery of the actual head and body of the slide is recognized to underestimate the dimensions of the actual hillside motion. With features masked by vegetation, overgrowth and no ability to provide data on actual soil conditions. I am concerned with the hillside stability being reduced. The assertion of increased hillside stability is an assumption not supported by analysis. The assertion is local to the stability within the project site. And does not appear to consider or analyze the consequence of undermining the adjacent uphill landslide. The um. I am additionally not persuaded that it is safe, safe and stable. In that, when the uh staff member just presented that the trees were not more than fifty years old. Uh, you can see on the site that there are a number of trees, some of which are what they propose to remove. Are considerably off vertical. They are off vertical because the soil on which they were growing slid. Uh, you don't get trees growing at fifteen degrees off normal, off vertical unless there has been a. Motion in the, in the uh hillside below them. I'm concerned that there does not seem to be an integrated risk analysis and management plan for the site. What is the possibility of the contractor's failure to complete the planned work? Which could impact both the property owner and our uphill property. Will a meaningful completion bond be required? I have had experience with this thirty years ago with this specific contractor that they are using. And they abandoned the project and didn't have enough staff to properly complete it. Uh, I hope they have rectified that in the last thirty years, but I have uh. No positive experience with them since then that indicate they are operating in a more reliable fashion. Uh, I also understand that it's a basic principle in California land use law. That the development of one property should not compromise or undermine an adjacent property. I am very concerned that the proposed work on this site. Would compromise the stability of the lower third of my site. I believe these gaps must be addressed and substantially resolved if this project is to be permitted. To proceed. As a small side note, the discussion of the dark side uh lighting, I very much appreciate that having been raised. The director of planning cited Kelvin twenty-seven hundred as a measurement. That is the color temperature of individual bulbs. It does not represent the intensity or light output of the bulbs. Uh, I haven't added them up since this just came up, but with sixty plus bulbs. That's an awful lot of light to spill on the ground and be reflected back up into the surrounding air. This will also impact uh our enjoyment of my property. Uh, I've spent my career in NASA. I do a fair amount of astronomy and having impact on the uh dark sky conditions. Uh, to the north of uh our home is uh not a, not a pleasant. Situation to contemplate after forty, nearly forty-seven years, forty-six years on this site. The staff graphics do not show the uphill slope, but only with the slope within the actual context of the. Project property. So it does not really show the full context and I hope that can be resolved and I hope the commissioners. Will uh consider that at this point. I appreciate your taking the time to review this and. Realize that the scale of the, of the. Proposed soil removal is uh, you know, considered a football field size out of the, or not a football field, a fraction of a football field. Out of the hillside and uh. Putting in. Retaining walls may stabilize it within the project site, but still have no effect whatsoever on having removed the footing. Of the slide that's uphill of it. Uh, if you've ever played with uh. A pile of sand on the beach or the tabletop game of Jenga, you'd uh fully appreciate that undermining. A uh. A pile of soil will call, cause what's uphill of it to uh be compromised and slide. Uh, pretty, pretty basic, not higher physics. So I look forward to your review of this project and uh hope there's a way to. Either prevent or remedy the uh my concerns. Thank you. Bye now.
Uh, thank you. Do commissioners have uh questions for uh Mr. Zimmerman, uh Commissioner Ramirez?
Yeah, just a quick question on the um regards to the lumens. What, uh, or, yeah, the um. In this case would be lumen. So what, what would you say it's a, is the appropriate amount of light in lumens coming out of a. A fixture in, in an area uh such as yours um in order to comply with the dark sky.
Uh, I can't really evaluate that on the basis of lumens alone as uh. Was originally referred to as to how that is, is shielded, how close to the ground it is. Uh, how much is reflected up from the ground which it's above? Uh, lumens alone does not begin to tell the story sufficiently.
What number?
There are a number of measures being proposed for dark sky measurement and light spill outside of properties, but the. The lumens and color temperature are well established measurements. I'm not at all concerned with the color temperature. That's along the lines of how blue or how yellow it is. But the intensity is very, is a very significant consideration. Sixty lights is a lot of light potentially.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Um, I have a question might not be for him, but um. We're talking about this retaining wall and removal of the trees, but also it's associated with uh. The improvement of a septic um system. So I don't know who may be asking, maybe he not be the one who, who uh have a response to this, but maybe Steve, but. The, the septic uh system expansion, um, is that the septic, septic uh expansion? Associated with this wall or can we do with or without the wall, things like that? I'd like to know.
Yes, um, thank you for that question, Commissioner Santa Cruz. Um, I'm actually going to ask Kelsey to address the. Relationship of the septic system expansion to the landscaping proposal.
It's a pill.
Um, Mr. Zimmerman, I'm going to ask you to mute your mic, please, while we continue our discussion. So the question to Kelsey is, um, what, what's the relationship between the septic system expansion and the landscape proposal?
Yeah, so the septic system expansion has informed what type of retaining wall they're proposing. Uh, the four of the upper retaining walls are solid poured concrete walls. Um, where the lower ones are um laid stone. Um, so the solid walls is to ensure that the septic system does not um leach through the walls down the hill. It retains it where it's supposed to be in the leach fields, where the lower ones are more coarse in order to allow water to flow through. I think the applicant may be better to answer the question on whether they would be willing to do one without the other. My understanding is because they were doing this work in general, they wanted to encompass all improvements in through one project.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Gupta, do you have questions for Mr. Zimmerman?
Uh, yes, um. Mr. Zimmerman, um, how far is your. Property line from the start of the improvements uh on the uh parcel below.
Yes, uh, the best answer to that can be seen on the drawings because our property line is immediately adjacent. To the south side of their property. Uh, one of, one of the peculiarities of the drawings is I'm not quite sure what they are. Uh, what their reference elevation is. Because they're using units that are in the order of five hundred and twenty and five hundred and thirty. And that's clearly not elevation meters or feet above sea level, which is the common reference point. So I have no idea how they are geo reference that, but their property is uh immediately below us. And in doing that work, uh, it could destabilize the hillside immediately above, which is like the lower third of our property. Another point that, since you brought up the issue of the septic field. I realized that the septic field is at an elevation above that of the house. So they're going to be dependent on having some sort of retaining tank. And possibly pumps to be able, electric pumps to move uh the waste from the house up to the septic field. So it's not a drainage driven system, uh, or gravity driven system. And I'm wondering about system reliability in the case of the power outages that we uh.
Have on.
Fre- frequently have here in our area.
Just had.
And uh, as you, as you know, as you know, in the county, it's not uncommon for power outages to extend well beyond twenty-four hours.
Okay, so uh going back to my question. So. How far down is there grading from your property line?
From my, it's there, the grading, my property line runs right along the bottom edge of the drawing they provided.
If I may, Commissioner Gupta, I just measured it on the plans and it's about forty-nine feet from the property line to where the grading begins.
From where the grading start? Okay, thank you. Um, and uh, Mr. Zimmerman. Has there been any uh landslide issues? On the property there in your mind?
In, in the time I have been here, we have, it's the lower third of our property. We very, very rarely go there because of accessibility issues. But what I am, we would like to be able to, to enjoy the, the middle third of our property at least. And uh, without having to worry about compromising that landslide zone. And uh, I'm afraid that if they start to undermine that lower third of the property. It could propagate further up the hillside.
And impinge on our.
Which a villages impinges on the, not only our, our ability to enjoy our property. But also the valuation of our property.
Okay, and, and you had uh, I think uh you had mentioned in your uh. Uh, talk that there were some neighborhood properties that had landslides?
Yes.
Yes, you can see, you can see it on one of the uh. Illustrations that the staff member presented by, from C two earth, you can see the, what's called LiDAR imaging. Which is a remote sensing technology. You can see several substantial slashes in the hillside, which are. Uh, the consequence of soil motion. Uh, the problem with LiDAR is it doesn't give you a precise measurement because it can be masked by the vegetative growth. That's overhead and it tells you nothing about the uh soil conditions within the slide itself.
Okay, and uh, did, are those owned by uh people who had to do something about it?
No, we've never had, I, that is why I explore, it's on the lower third of my property. And that's why I explored the possibility of acquiring the land below me, so as to minimize the risk. And at that time, it was part of another property that they weren't interested. They weren't concerned because they knew it was unbuildable and it was uh. If you go there today and stand in the driveway and look south towards the property, you will, if you are. Aware or sensitive to geotechnical conditions, which I am, you can see that it is at the foot of. It's a debris field at the foot of a landslide zone. It's, it's conspicuous to someone who's skilled in. Geotechnical considerations.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Commissioner Hanson.
Um, yeah, my next question is going to be directed to, to um Ms. Lang, which were raised really. From Mr. Zimmerman's comments, could the septic tank system be put in without terraces?
Uh, so my understanding is the existing septic tank is down uh closer to the house. And the existing leach fields are sort of at the bottom of the area that would become the lawn. Uh, and that that area would be, those leach fields would be abandoned, which would then require the leach fields to be moved up above. The, the proposed retaining walls. I noticed that the applicant does have their engineer on the line. And so I think those questions about how the septic system could work in different scenarios would be better answered by them.
Okay, um, I know you mentioned it and it slipped by me. Approximately, when did the landslide occur? How many years ago?
Uh, it's unknowable. I, I mean, it's part, it's partial, uh, it's unknowable to me because it's before I moved here. Uh, but, but I look at, but I find indicative is that as I view the property. From the adjacent road, uh, I can see the, not only what looks like a debris field from the landslide. But there are a number of trees on the order of six or seven, which are significantly displaced from the vertical. As you would see when a slide, when a slope moves and then the, the trees adapt by continuing to grow vertically. But that leaves a conspicuous uh crooked bent in the, in the trunk.
Right, that, that's called soil, uh, soil creep. And if they're under fifty years old and landslide occurred before that. That means it's the soils are still active and moving.
Yeah, there, there are trees that are, I, I'm estimating are between six and twelve inches in diameter. Because I haven't been on the property.
And, and you see them leaning?
Yes. And they will, anyone would see them leaning if you just stood at the uh entrance to the, you don't have to go onto the property. You can see it from the adjacent road.
And there have been other landslides in this area.
Yeah.
Some of which are quite recent.
There's a lot of fresh landslides in the Vista Verde area. Uh, the individual uh. Contract, building contractor who commented on the number slides, which he was uh quite happy to have the contracts to repair them. But he was surprised they've been improved in the first place.
So, okay. Because they're not, because they're not buildable.
Yeah, there are a number of lots that have become abandoned.
Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you.
Okay, does the applicant uh owner wish to speak, uh, Mr. Duta?
Hey, thank you very much, Chair Ketchum. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much um to all the commissioners um for taking the time to um address these issues. Um, you know, I, I'm trying to anticipate some of the questions you might have as well as cover some of the ones that have come up. Um, so, you know, Commissioner Gupta, I noticed you asked uh some others over the last few months, how long they've had the property. Uh, I purchased this lot um back in two thousand and five and uh built the house, designed the house. Um, basically acted as a general contractor uh to a certain extent um to have it built from two thousand and five to two thousand and six. Um, you know, we've loved living in this community since that time. There's many of my nephews and nieces who've, you know. Uh, enjoyed the Portola Valley schools. Uh, my wife and I just had our first child and so this is really about us. Being able to enjoy more of our property that's, that as you could see from the pictures is historically been, you know, very um. you know, has a grading to it, and we're trying to create a lawn, a lawn area that our child can play in, which we think is especially important. Now considering things that are going on with COVID. Um, so, uh, thank you for your consideration here. Our goal is in common with Mr. Zimmerman's and that we want it to be safe. So we've gone through every step of the process, hired all of the required engineers and consultants that are needed. Um, and for every comment that we've ever gotten back from the county's specialists, and there's so many of them, you know, we've, we've worked together and not you know, been obtrusive or otherwise tried to, uh, you know, resist, uh, you know, making changes to the plans. And, you know, Chair Ketchum, to your, to your point regarding lighting, you know, which I'm, I'm in your camp. I, I want the lighting to be, you know, proper for the neighborhood. I don't want it to disturb the neighbors. All of our existing lighting is on timers, um, that automatically shut off a few hours, you know, before midnight. But it's all about safety and making sure our stairs are well lit and that if people are visiting our property, they feel safe. So if there's any modifications, lighting plan that would help relieve any of the concerns that you have, you know, we're happy to adopt, uh, adopt those changes as well. Now, going into some of the specifics that Mr. Zimmerman had raised, these were all addressed in, in the county's work after he had submitted his, his requests. And on his point about slope stability, up Geotech or C two earth and, and Chris Hundemer is on the line as well to get into much more gory detail than I can about his slope stability analysis. But Sherry did show you that it had been done and it is a mathematical analysis that shows that by having over sixty piers drilled into the bedrock to support these retaining walls, we are actually supporting the top material that's above that bedrock better than it currently is right now, which is without any support whatsoever. So from our perspective, by adding these retaining walls, we will improve the safety, not just for us, but also for all of the neighbors around us. And the C two earth letter from May twenty sixth specifically said that the areas beyond the property lines are outside of the zone of influence for the duration of the cuts. So it isn't as though these issues weren't addressed in the, the follow on letters. Everything was. Um, and we can again go into any level of detail that you wish to cover them. In preparing the plan, uh, plans for the home back in two thousand and five, we had to dig holes, you know, to, to basically understand what the formation of the specific lot is. And so we had holes that were used for perk testing as well as, uh, deep holes that were thirteen to sixteen feet deep. And it confirmed what, um, the Geotech reports are saying, and, and that's the basis of the Geotech reports. All of the structural engineering design work was done after the geotechnical reports were, were issued so that they would be built in conformance with it. Similarly, for this project, and this goes into the subject question, there are two leach lines of ninety feet that have been in existence since two thousand and six, when, when we built them for the septic system. In the driveway is a fifteen hundred gallon tank. There's another fifteen hundred gallon tank that's a pump tank, which can hold up to about a month of extra, you know, fluid and, and waste. And then the pump turns on every once in a while when a float reaches a, a certain level and pumps the effluent, just the, you know, the liquid up into that leach field, into the two ninety foot lengths. All we're doing in this plan is because one of the ninety feet lengths is within the lawn area, we're taking the same ninety feet, breaking it up into two parts and moving it behind the house. That's, that's all that's going on there and there's no additional risk um, in terms of that change in design. We're not doing it because we're making a bigger house or adding more bathrooms. This is just to make sure that the system is the same as it is currently um, and conforming with all of the, the, the rules that environmental the environmental health department has. And ideas over there has been fantastic in guiding us through that process and, and it's very detailed. So, um, you know, another question I think might have been implied in Commissioner Gupta's, um, uh, statements earlier. These retaining walls follow the contour lines of the slope. And that's, you know, a, a, a general engineering practice that you don't want to, you know, build vertically, you know, that would be a, a, a much more difficult kind of construction and, and for us, you know, it's important to, to follow the contours. So that's what we did. You know, the, the, the landslide, um, that, you know, was of concern, you know, Sherry had mentioned was over fifty years ago. Yeah, we've been here for over fifteen years now and, you know, have not witnessed any sort of indication of, of slope stability problems. But what we do see oftentimes when trees are bending is that it's a very densely treed wooded area. So a lot of trees start going to where the light is. And so they bend over the driveways where there's, where there's easier access to light. So there's more than one reason for why a tree might start bending in a particular direction beyond the fact that the, that the soil has moved and is somewhat indicative of there being some sort of risk there. Also, I think, you know, Commissioner Gupta, you know, you're, you're asking how far, you know, the, the property lines are, and yeah, it's, it's nearly fifty feet to the property line, but probably another hundred and fifty feet or so even to, to their home, to their residence. So there's, and it's all very densely wooded. There's, there's no, you know, uh, open areas. The the analysis that would, would, would be done for lighting, again, you know, we're, we're happy to adopt whatever the planning commission would, would think is appropriate to make sure that that isn't a reason to hold us up. And, you know, the other thing just to, to, to mention is, you know, this isn't Jenga. This isn't sand on a beach. We're actually building retaining walls into bedrock to support everything that's about it more than it would be supported without them. Um, I'm sure, you know, Chris Hundemer, who's on the line, would be able to explain that even better than I can. And, you know, I think that the concern about, you know, the area around the lot not being analyzed as part of the report is a little bit off point because everything that is stated in the report explains that there isn't any impact outside of the, the areas of the development. And just because, um, you know, that answer may not be the one that, you know, opponents is, 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 you know, happy with. That's the truth in terms of a professional opinion from Chris Hundemer, you know, as well as the letter from the twenty sixth, the signed and sealed by his business partner, um, you know, Craig Reed, who's also, uh, both of them, by the way, were involved in the building of a home. So they've known this property for at least fifteen, sixteen years. And they used to work with someone named Rex Up, who had done the initial Geotech report that the prior owners of this lot had used to, to design their home that they ultimately decided not to build. But, um, you know, they, they have a very strong familiarity with this land in a very technical way that's based on all of the work in terms of digging holes, analyzing soil samples. We took samples of the soil at, uh, you know, three foot intervals to send to labs to make sure that they would be able to absorb, you know, the effluent that would be pumped up from the septic systems. All of that came back as, as basically a grade A, which is, you know, the best type of soil for, for absorbing the, the septic. And so, you know, we're very confident in this design. This isn't the first time that we've gone through a review process with the county because we had to, to build this home. And, um, and, and so, you know, we also went through the Sequoia analysis as well, which you all probably know is a very detailed analysis. Um, and, you know, again, through the building permit application process, if there's anything else we need to review, revise, amend, we're, we're open to it, but ultimately the amount of, of soil that's being moved is commensurate to, um, to, to other projects. And it's not all removed. A, a, a good amount of it is actually being put back in a better way where it's going to be compacted in a way that's more stable than it currently exists. And so, you know, again, going back, you know, full circle to my original point, which is we, we, we share the concerns about safety for us as well as our neighbors. And, you know, we're very confident based on all of the analysis and work that's been done, the thorough review that's been done by, by the county, that this, you know, really will improve the safety of our, our property as well as the safety of everybody who's upgrade from us um, as well as downgrade from us as well. And unless you all have other questions, I'm, I'm happy to turn it over to Chris Hundemer, the geotechnical engineer, who, who might have further thoughts on addressing specific issues raised by the appellants and, and the commissioners.
I thank you, Sancho. Thank you, commissioners. Also, yeah, I'm Chris Hundemer. I'm a licensed geologist, engineering geologist, and also a civil engineer. I was involved with the, uh, conducting the original study in two thousand and one for the development of this property. My firm has done hundreds of, of projects within the Portola Valley, Los Trancos Woodside region, including sixty six projects just within Los Trancos Woods itself. So we're very familiar with the geology and with the engineering conditions here. I wanted to speak a little bit about the landsliding. The entire community of Los Trancos Woods is within an ancient landslide. That means a landslide that's ten thousand or more years old. Uh, typically those landslides were thought to have occurred during different climatic regimes, periods of ice ages when sea levels were different, rainfall is different, et cetera. In looking through the site, since the time of the initial study that was done in two thousand and one, the U S Geological Survey has conducted LiDAR surveys, which you heard the app, uh, appellant talk about. Primarily looking at fault line, so nations along the San Andreas Fault. And since this community is close to the San Andreas Fault, the LiDAR coverage for that fault covers this area as well. So in looking through the LiDAR, one of the things we do for our study is look at the LiDAR and see if there's evidence of recent landslide movements that could affect a project. There are a number of things that are, show up on the LiDAR. There are a number of types of topographic changes that can look like landslides and they're not, and there are things that could look like landslides and there are. Uh, this community has extensive history of grading on properties. There's prior logging, there's trails, there's road construction. All of those things show up as changes to the original landscape when you look at the LiDAR. What caught our attention and caught the attention of Cotton Shires and Associates, who was the county's peer reviewer for geotechnical issues, was a mass that could be interpreted as a landslide that goes through the project area. That landslide measures about a hundred feet wide to a hundred and twenty feet wide. And the project site is kind of right in the central portion of that mass. Uh, that's the, the, the figure that Kelsey showed from one of our letters. It's not known if that's a landslide or not. There's no historical evidence that that is in fact a landslide. There is quite subdued topography or relief around the toe and around the lateral margins, which suggests that if it is a landslide, it's well more than fifty years old and, and predates any historic development in the site. What we look to do then is in conjunction with talking with the county's reviewer, is to do a comparative analysis and what will the effect of our, our project be in accordance with the landscape. So we conduct a, we have a topographic survey that was performed for the project. That topographic survey sets a base elevation that the surveyor sets. It's not tied to any mean say level, but the data is accurate from top of the line to top of line. It's not, it doesn't have to conform to any kind of sea level data. And looking at conducting a model through the steepest portion of the site through our project, we prepare a stability analysis from property line to property line. And we look at what the effects are for the current conditions and then the conditions with the project in place. And our analysis showed from property line to property line that the stability will actually increase with the property, with the project in place. That generally has to do with taking mass off of a higher portion of the slope and putting fill as a mass on a lower portion of the slope. Anytime you remove material from higher on a slope and put material lower on a slope, you're going to have a stabilizing effect. It also has to do with the drill peers that are going in to support these retaining walls. The appellant is incorrect about the method of study being in a dry condition. The unit weights that were used in the model were wet saturated unit weights for both the bedrock surface and for the, the overlying soil. The retaining walls themselves are designed to resist all hydrostatic pressure. They have a, a more than two times normal load that they're designed to handle compared to a normal side retaining wall, where we would evaluate a drain condition. And the site retaining walls that are the stack blocks ignore all cohesion in the analysis and use the saturated weight. So all of these conservative things were put into the model to assume wet weather conditions when the analysis was done. Typically, when you do excavations, the, the maximum height of cut, I believe, is going to be about the order of eleven feet. OSHA has terracing and guidelines for how to do a cut that high that generally relates to about a one to one slope. So the zone of influence on those cuts is about eleven feet back from the toe of that cut. We are more than forty to fifty feet away from the appellant's property. The highest part of the property down near the, the southeast corner actually is more about seventy five feet from the property line, where, where the, through the steepest direction of the site to where a closer retaining wall is going to be done. There are also procedures in place for sequencing the construction to build the initial wall, then dig it down, build the second wall, then dig down. So you're not creating an, an unstable situation. The contractor has to follow all OSHA guidelines, has to make benches, has to do cuts, and has to stage this sequencing so that he's not creating a, a, a situation. We're involved all the way through the project. We're out there while these cuts are made. So we're doing geotechnical services to make sure that the piers are drilled correctly and also trying to observe if any evidence of any instability is occurring. But if any were to occur, the zone of influence would be immediately adjacent to these cuts and not influenced up slope properties. The site slopes are mellowed by about four feet of soil. So I did backhoe test pits on the site in two thousand that were part of the two thousand and one study. Uh, as, as Sanjuda also noted, there are more than sixty drill peers that were done in, for the house and also for a large concrete retaining wall that goes around the driveway. I personally observed all of those peer excavations and also the excavations along the back for that retaining wall. And all of that referenced the, the data that was observed found competent conglomerate Santa Clara bedrock. Photos of that were provided in the report and one of my letters that I'm sure you have in your packet that shows that we have a thin veneer of three or four feet of soil overlying this really competent conglomerate Santa Clara formation. We've seen similar, uh, materials where we've done excavations for water tanks for Los Trancos Water District, also up beneath the road and had no adverse effects with instability during construction. Overall, in my, it's my opinion that the zone of influence for this project is localized and will remain local within this project. There'll be continuous oversight by me or members of my staff during construction. And that the project will yield an overall greater factor of safety to the hillside than anything above, than any other situation that's there now. If any of the tree movement is related to soil creep, that creep is typically subject to the upper three feet of soil and all of that soil in this area is going to be retained now by your supportive retaining walls. So that will arrest the creep in that area. I, I think that, that pretty much concludes what I've said, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that commissioners may have.
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for, uh, Mr. Duta or Hundemer? Uh, start with Commissioner Ramirez.
I, I don't have one at the moment. Thank you.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
I have a quick one for Steve. Mostly, it's related to this appeal in, in the, in, in terms of to be or not to be. I mean, what, if we move, I think the retaining wall, it makes more sense because their applicants or their parents are concerned mostly of, 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 it would be some sort of like, uh, how do you, I forgot the term, but like, uh, bringing, like, it, it may, it may be shakeable lands and it may be a problem if we don't do anything. But the most logical thing is to have a retaining wall because that will help, uh, their concern of the appellants and the applicants to have a more secure and stable land for both the appellant and the applicant. So my question to Steve is, uh, what if we don't do the wall? What will be the consequences of that?
Yes, uh, thank you, Commissioner Santa Cruz. Um, I think no project would result in the applicant's inability to make full use and enjoyment of their property. This is a property that's designated for residential use. And to have a spot where your children can play is, I think, a reasonable expectation for a residentially zoned parcel. So, um, I think the conclusion of the geotechnical expert evaluated this project is that the walls will lead to greater stability. That's been concurred with by the county's geotechnical experts. I think what we have in front of us is a matter of differences of opinion regarding a technical matter, which is not something unusual. We, we see We see debates about technical issues often and the appallant is certainly entitled to their position. Their concerns are understandable, but it's staff's view that they've been carefully evaluated and addressed.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
So just to finish up, questions for the applicant. Does Commissioner Gupta, do you have anything?
Ah, yes. It may be for the, for Mr. Datta or for Geotech for the applicant. Were there any instability issues when the home was built in 2005?
Yeah, I can answer that. No, there were not. And I provided photographs that I took during construction showing the vertical cuts behind the home and behind the retaining wall. There was one incidence where there is a, there is a current retaining wall that exists behind the home. There was a stacked block retaining wall similar to what is being proposed downhill of the lawn area on this project. That wall is going to be replaced with a peer supported wall. During one of my observations, I noticed that the contractor had incorrectly built that wall and recommendations were taken to unbuilt the wall and actually rebuild it correctly. And there was never an instability during any of that period when the wall was there or not.
And this was a retaining wall?
Yes, the uphill of the house, there is, there is a retaining wall along a walkway of the uphill house.
Walkway of the house, okay.
And then like the driveway that's there now, there is a peer supported concrete retaining wall along the uphill side of the driveway as it leads towards the garage. And that wall had also vertical cuts, the temporary cuts during construction right in the area of the proposed project. And there was not any instability in those cuts. And that you have photographs in your file to show that.
And that driveway is, what should I say, concrete driveway?
Yes, it is.
Any slides have appeared there?
We have not seen any slant sliding on this property or historical landslide in this immediate vicinity.
Okay. And if I may ask, like what, what was the motivation behind this project?
Honestly, Commissioner Gupta, I always wanted to have an area like this, a yard, even in the 2005 timeframe when we designed the house. Quite frankly, I couldn't afford it back then. It was really a focus of ours to create a home that we could, we could live in as quickly as possible with the means that we had. I've been very fortunate over the last fifteen years to do well professionally and be at a place now where I can afford to, you know, design and build a project like this for my family. And I really hope, you know, that we can make this a reality since it's been something that I've been dreaming about for, for, you know, sixteen years.
Okay, okay, great. And one more question, more for my understanding is, what do you anticipate as the duration of this project while you are building it?
So I've talked to a few contractors about timeframes. As far as the excavation is concerned, they would expect it to take about a month in terms of building, just as Chris had described, one wall at a time, excavating one at a time in a very, you know, controlled and thoughtful way. And then all of the improvements on top of that, by the time we might actually get to planting some of those plants, there's nearly six hundred on the planting plan. So that will take a little bit of time. It could be about a three to four month project, you know, end to end.
Okay, okay. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
I don't have any further questions, but I do want to thank Mr. Hunterman, Huntermark. Did I get that right?
Huntermark, yes.
Yes. You gave a very good presentation that was very logical and easy to follow. And for sitting up here for over long as I have, I don't, that's a rarity. So I really want to thank you for being clear and concise and informative.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
Oh, thank you. Actually, I did also appreciate that. That's very understandable and thorough. So now I'd like to move on to public comment on this item and I'll turn this portion over to Ms. Luhan.
Hi, we're now opening public comment for item number two. If you're calling by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Chair, I don't see any hands raised and I have not received any additional written comments.
Thank you. Seeing we have no members of the public wish to speak, if there are no objections, public comment on this item is now closed. Does staff have any other comments at this point?
No, Chair Ketchum, we're available to answer any further questions you may have.
All right, so we'll move on to Commissioner comments and deliberation and we'll start with Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you for the opportunity. Can staff answer or comment on, on the mid pen letter that was sent to us, you know, regarding the trees and all that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. You know, mid pens concerns about the project are about how the planting and landscaping activities could potentially impact surrounding open space lands managed by mid pen. And as this commission knows, there's been a longstanding problem of what we call tan oak disease or other diseases related to boring beetles in trees that cause their ultimate decline. Some trees are more susceptible to that and thought to contribute to the spread. And then there's also practices that can be undertaken to minimize the spread. So mid pens recommendations, which were welcome and incorporated into our staff recommendation and also agreed to by the applicant, seek to change the types of trees that will be planted to those that will hopefully be more able to withstand some of these diseases that the trees in the neighborhood are facing. And it also requires that precautions be taken to prevent the spread and such as cleaning your pruning materials and so forth. So this is something that I think the planning and building department just needs to be accustomed to including a standard conditions of approval when we're working in these forested areas. So we appreciate mid pen making sure that we include these provisions in this project and we'll, we think it's appropriate and we'll plan on doing it in similar projects in the future.
Okay, so what about, I mean, going forward, if this is going to be something that is going to be a standard that we're going to adopt? Does that mean, because mid pen is suggesting that in order to plant like oaks, that you basically take the seeds from the local growth and then you start a plant and then eventually will grow into a tree? Is that something that we're gonna go with now? I mean, being that we probably want something that grows fast. I mean, are we going to start from zero in order to grow one tree? Or is there any other way to get around that? Like, you know, making sure that the nurseries are doing the job, the right job and making sure that they're producing trees that are, you know, that are free of any disease that are ready to move in? Because I'm, I, I don't think we want to wait, you know, twenty, forty, fifty years for, for a seedling to start and then eventually grow into a tree.
Fair comment. So the use of vegetation and replacement of vegetation when removed serve certain purposes in certain cases. There are instances that this commission is familiar with where vegetation provides important screening to prevent adverse visual impacts. And in those situations, replacing the removed vegetation with something that will quickly supplement the visual screening that was lost is certainly an interest where the planting of an acorn wouldn't suffice. In this instance, I don't believe that the vegetation that's being removed is providing any sort of screening, visual screening. The intent of the replacement requirement is simply to protect the overall environmental health and air quality of the county. And in looking at that objective, I believe that this, the genetic strength of the species we choose are, is certainly an important factor. The reasons why we go with acorns as opposed to nursery stock in these instances is because there is a theory that there are resistant trees within the forest that have survived and not been susceptible to the sudden oak disease. And if we replant the seeds of the trees that have proven genetic resistance, then we can create a healthier forest throughout the county. And so in this particular instance, I believe the planting of acorns is the appropriate mitigation. But I also recognize your concern, Commissioner Ramirez, that that approach wouldn't work in all situations.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. But I think, as you say, and suggested that going forward, this may be a mitigation that we require. I, I just have concern that, you know, I, I really don't think we want to wait fifty years for a, for a tree to finally look like a tree, you know. So i- is there any way, any other way to do it? Like, you know, making sure that nurseries around here start their stock with native seedlings from around here? And I don't know if that's something like, there'd be a certification so that make sure that they have something like that going forward. Anyway, I, I think we can address some of those things going forward, but I have my concerns about that.
Commissioner Ramirez, can I follow up on some of your comments? Because last week I had a conversation with Professor Tony March Block and from Cal State University East Bay. He's in environmental sciences about oak trees and whether to just this question, you know, whether you use acorns or things like that. And, you know, he's very much for the acorn hypothesis and things like that. But what he followed up, something that I thought was very interesting is we're probably using the wrong acorns because looking down what our projected climate will be, is the resistant acorns from Santa Barbara we should be looking at. If you want long-term survival. So just want to throw that out there. And, you know, there are experts in our area who I'm not being one of them, but I do have an interest in oak trees. And he thinks the acorn hypothesis is a good one. We're just using from the wrong source.
Well, yeah, I know. Well, anyway, I think this is a subject that we, we're going to have to address in the coming years and the community to start thinking about these things. I was just very concerned about the, you know, the, the, when we're trying to replace the canopy of the trees that we're taking out to start with the seed in order to grow a tree. I think we, you know, it will take forever. Where normally we say, hey, we want a replacement of a two to three, but we normally say it's a, it's a, it's a ten gallon or whatever, something that has already started a few years ago so that we are ahead on buying time. All right, that, that's all my questions at the moment.
Commissioner Santa Cruz, any final comments, discussion?
No, I, I think it's very clear the interest in avoiding a landslide. I'm lean, I'm right now leaning toward denying the appeal and uphold the decision. So if there is no further question, I would like to propose a motion.
Commissioner Gupta.
No, I think Mr. Hindemar explained, explained the things well. The questions that I had, they were addressed and project looks good to me. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, do you have anything else?
I have no further comments.
I, I can understand the owner's desire for safety regarding the landslideers. Their home sits at the foot of the slope. So I, I'm in favor of the, the motion as proposed, but I would like to just ask that the lighting condition of approval limit light intensity to the requirement for safety and not display. Can we add that wording in? I would just like that to be appended to the motion. So may we have a motion?
Okay, I have a motion to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the community development director to approve the grading permit for file number PLN 2020 dash zero one, one three zero with, with the conditions of the beaming the line, the, the lighting as, as appropriate.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
I.
I.
Is it me?
Yeah.
I'm going to say nay because I feel that there was, we could have done this without the terrorists. I wasn't convinced that it couldn't be done without them.
Commissioner Ramirez.
I.
I. Motion passes forward one with Commissioner Hanson opposed.
And to inform the appallant and the applicant that this decision is appealable to the board of supervisors.
Okay. Excite.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all. Move on now to the directors' portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Chair and commissioners. So the correspondence that came in today, you've received with the exception of the email from the coastal commission staff and we'll make sure that that's included with the staff report when it's brought back to you. So I don't have any other correspondence to report on. Moving on to the next item, there is no study session planned for the next meeting. There are two items currently on the agenda. They include a residential addition in Emerald Lake Hills as well as compliance review of the Arada Farms. As the commission may recall, there is a permit for the Arada Farms to run its annual Halloween pumpkin sales event. And at the last time that project was considered by the commission, there was a request that staff come back with an analysis of whether or not the property is in compliance with the Williamson Act program. And so we'll be reporting to you on that at the next meeting. Moving to the director's report, I only have one item to you today and it is to update you that the board of supervisors agreed to the suggested modifications that the coastal commission required on the accessory dwelling unit regulations. So the board's acceptance of those modifications are being transmitted to the coastal commission. And once they deem them legally adequate, those changes will take effect. And that concludes my report today, Chair.
Do commissioners have any updates or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So, and I, I think this is something that we're going to have to get into a discussion. SB nine. This, the new state approved for housing or what do you call it? Subdividing residential lots. Any, any comments?
Yes, I, I'm still getting my mind around it and understanding the consequences for this county. mind around it and understanding the consequences for this county. I think there's a lot of details packed into that discussion that I need to get organized and outlined before I'm prepared to give the commission a full report on that. So if I could interpret your comments, Commissioner Ramirez, is a request for a future study session on SB nine and other related legislation. I'd be happy to come back with you with such a report.
Yeah, that's basically all I'm saying right now that.
Yeah, I'd like echo that too, because my concern isn't the the dividing it, it is the infrastructure support, because we did do that. And suddenly you've overcrowded. You know, we do things, you know, piecemeal. That doesn't really work long term, not only we're short term. And I worry about the infrastructure to get to do what's required of us.
Certainly, you know, there's a lot of concerns. And I guess my hesitancy in spending a lot of our time and resources on this is the legislation as it stands essentially eliminates local discretion on these matters. So we can talk about it and, you know, share our concerns about it. But I think the fact of the matter is it's legislation that we're going to have to live with and figure out what it means for our county. And so that's where I think our discussion is best focused.
Somewhere, you know, there just isn't enough water connections and sewer connections and traffic connections. Things break down, and I don't think that's the intent.
Yeah, anyway, I think we're going to have to start a long conversation about what it entails for us and to the communities that we represent.
Steve, do you have an update on remote meetings? And
you know, the last I heard was it the possibility of going back to in person meetings had been pushed out till November at the soonest. And I haven't heard anything since. I think there's still a lot of questions and concerns out there. Let me ask Janice if she's heard anything else.
Yeah, no, nothing since the November date. But I was listening to one of the planners speak that they were going to push out that date even further to December. So if more, if, you know, we know more, I don't think he has, you know, any idea or I heard anything on his side. But as we know more, we'll bring it back.
The, on the coast side, the various local agencies are assuming they need to go back to in person meetings as of October first.
So so. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. The legislation signed by the government, B three sixty one, signed on Thursday of last week. So we've been scrambling to get and understand how to advise all the various legislative bodies of the county how to respond. At the moment, our interpretation is that the legislation gives the legislative bodies the option to continue to conduct meetings in basically the format you just experienced today. If they make a finding that meeting in person would present an imminent risk to the health and safety of meeting attendees. And it's my belief that the Board of Supervisors will likely adopt such a finding and will encourage all the boards and commissions of San Mateo County to do the same in light of the current state of the pandemic. Although our local numbers are quite good, they tend to be good because we do things like this. And so while the county, the Board of Supervisors isn't giving affection to every agency like the Planning Commission about whether to return to in person meetings, I think it's going to be their strong encouragement to continue in this format because it's safer and because most meetings can effectively be conducted online. And there are benefits to doing so that 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 commission may want to continue by adopting the appropriate findings. So we'll bring you an appropriate action item at your next meeting to continue online meetings until you tell us not to.
So as far as the Midcoast Community Council goes, um, they would need to take some action at their meeting this evening in order to be covered for next October? Or they'll have to have an in person meeting in October to do that or what?
No, each of these committees will receive advice from their council and lawyers from this office as appropriate. But in general, the findings to online meetings can occur at an online meeting. So the legislation is quite specific that one of the bases for conducting an online meeting is for holding a meet the purpose of making the appropriate findings. So there is no requirement that you either take your action now or that you have an in person meeting before making the finding. That would be a bit contrary to the legislature was trying to accomplish. So our our recommendation, I leave it to other lawyers in this office to advise their respective clients. But the recommendation that I'm to my clients is that they can have an agendized item for making the appropriate findings to continue on meetings at their next regular meeting agendized as an online meeting.
Okay, they, yeah, I don't think they got the message. I'll just tell them to reach out to you.
The city of South San Francisco is holding hybrid meetings. The city council is holding hybrid meetings here.
There are some agencies in California that never stopped meeting in person. So it's not a requirement that meetings be online, and it never was. If if agencies want to declare their in person meetings to be an essential public function or government function, they do so and and did so. Largely that occurred in areas of the county, areas of the state, I should say, that had different density and different political culture and different COVID transmission rates, frankly. So this county has its own sort of culture of online participation, and it has the resources to provide online meetings in a lot more instances than some other jurisdictions in California. So in general, I believe that most agencies will likely want to continue online meetings unless they have determined that their community needs them to have in persons. But again, we don't advise the cities and the city councils to do what they think the public demands of them.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
No.
Seeing no further business, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, guys, see you next time.
Have a great day.
Bye bye.